So I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order on March 4, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Right on time. Hi, everybody. So this one, I think, is going to go pretty quickly. Budget-focused, for sure. All right, so we're going to start out with public comment. Public comment is for anything that someone wants to bring up that is not on the agenda tonight and is limited to three minutes or less. Anybody there, Vanessa? Anybody here? No? Carl's here for something, too. Okay. All right, Jason, come on up. So we're going to start out with Jason Malinowski, who is the Chair of the Personnel Board, to talk about the SAP bylaw changes that will be in the warrant this time. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
We're good so far.
It was good to see everyone. Do I have, I don't have John, but do I have, I don't have a quorum on Zoom. Okay, all right. So this has been a different year for the Personnel Board. I would say the, while we certainly have changes that we are proposing to the SAP, I'll say they are lighter in touch than some of the massive changes we made in some of the prior years. Nonetheless, they are important changes and, you know, kind of set the stage for potential future actions that I will kind of delve into a little bit tonight so that you can start to get your thinking caps on for post-town meeting of how we want to engage on that tonight. I think you have in your packet each of our red-line items. I don't intend to go through each of them. I'm happy to answer questions. The one item that I do think warrants discussion that the Personnel Board has not taken a position on yet is actually Section 18, which basically, and the town clerk is welcome to come up and speak to any of this, too. This came initially from him. It really speaks to how things should work, or could work, if someone brought a motion on town meeting floor to amend the SAP. And right now, I think there's probably conflicting language between how potentially the moderator may deal with that amendment and what the SAP says on what should happen with that amendment. From best we can tell from the history, the intention of what currently is in the SAP is mainly to allow the Personnel Board time to digest an amendment and provide an appropriate recommendation on it. Obviously, if we strike the language that is currently there, it can be challenging in terms of how we would go about discussing it, enacting it. But at the same time, any other article that comes before town meeting certainly has the ability to be amended on the floor absent, you know, some of the other procedural items that we've heard from council in the past. So I think that's one of the items that we need to talk about. The other item that we need to talk about is the actual simple printing of how the SAP appears in the town code. And there's a one-line reference right now in town code. There's been a recommendation made by the town clerk of how this should be in terms of the SAP would be essentially on file with the clerk and basically just reference that. But I think there is a more holistic question of because you are changing town code, of whether that should be part of SAP article that exists, which is usually around Article 4, or whether that should be a separate item in and of itself. That procedurally, I don't think the Personnel Board has a strong opinion on one way or another. So welcome any feedback all of you have, but we've had very little discussion or debate on it because we were waiting for council to weigh in, and council really has kind of said all that has been proposed has been, is okay. So that's kind of where we're at. There's other items in here that I could spend as much or as little time on as possible. I think there's a good summary here. So welcome opening the floor on this specific piece, and then I'll kind of go to where we're going next as a Personnel Board.
Your intent is to go back to the Personnel Board with this one and take an official position?
We just haven't, we discussed this, there was questions raised by other Personnel Board members of like how this would legally work, like can we go back to the history? So we just haven't taken an official vote on it, is really all we haven't done. We've discussed it. I don't know if it would be unanimous vote, to be completely honest, but I think it's something we thought, it's a broader conversation because it goes to kind of how a town meeting is run and, you know, what rights should be afforded to the taxpayers that are ultimately voting on this in terms of their ability to amend it on the fly.
Interesting. So isn't this a little bit of a conundrum? Let's say that you vote, don't vote to support this. There's a majority against this. And you're supposed to be responsible for putting the changes to the SAP on the warrant, right? So how does this get there, then?
Well, I, at least this is my, my understanding, and I'm certainly happy to be corrected. The way this currently works, if you just respect the language that's in the SAP, is the Personnel Board brings forward changes to the SAP. If you were to then make a motion to, like, an amendment on the floor to change something, let's just say it's one of these stipends, let me say it's one of the salaries, one of the ranges of, like a numerical item, or just a word, any other board or committee reacts on the fly, as you all do. When a motion comes on the table, you caucus and decide what your view is on that motion. Sometimes you know that amendment is coming a year in advance. Sometimes you get surprised, right, on the floor. The way I read this is that, right now, this would not be permissible, at least if you just follow the SAP. No, I can't speak to how the moderator would, would direct this, and I think there is some precedent with how he's dealt with motions in the past specific to this. I think the intent of this is to allow someone to make a motion to amend the SAP on the floor, just like any other article we see.
I am, too. Okay, so one more, let me try one more time. Okay, so if Personnel Board meets and doesn't support this language?
Yes.
Okay, and therefore, it doesn't go in the SAP article, correct?
I agree with that statement, yes.
Okay, so then you would get to town meeting, and possibly Jim, somebody would get up and attempt to amend the SAP here. And Paul would then have to decide whether it was appropriate to be able to do that, given it contradicts what's written in the SAP.
It would be, it would be a good test. So I'd welcome Jim, if that's what Jim would do, but it would essentially be a good test of the actual amendment, if we wanted to see how the town would react to it. But I'm not proposing that we would vote it down. We just haven't taken a position.
I'm not speaking to the mayor, so I'm just trying to figure out how this gets done.
Yeah, I hear you.
Hello, Mr. Haggerty.
I really wish these cookies on, on.
I know.
My wife consuming, I can't have any.
Let him take care of it.
Thank you, Jim Haggerty, Town Clerk. If we go back on the time machine, I recall there was an instance under a prior moderator where I believe Ms. Alzobekian made an amendment to the SAP on the floor, and it was allowed. In addition, under a prior moderator, me being unaware of this, I made some motions to amend the SAP, which were accepted on the floor. That was a situation where neither the Personnel, Select Board or Advisory Board were aware of the changes. They hadn't seen a red light version. And I made several amendments that the hall agreed with. This moderator will not allow a change because of the language in this section. So let's, we have a bifurcation here. If we, if the Personnel Board were to support removal of this section from the, from the SAP, and we go through town meeting, that would enable anybody at the town meeting to make an amendment as you would for any other article, whether it be a, I don't know, Planning Board article, or, you know, those pretty complex issues or anything else. Now, some people have said they think it's a bad idea because somebody makes something frivolous. I think the hall is pretty mature. When somebody does something frivolous, they get shot down pretty quickly. But on the other hand, so that's one, one thought. And I frankly trust the collective wisdom of the town meeting. That's how we govern ourselves, and I think that the voters are mature enough to address those. At the end of the day, they're the ones that make the decision town meeting that affect your pocketbook. And if they wanted to raise this stipend to 50,000 bucks, and the moderator thought that was in the four corners of the warrant, we live with the consequences of those decisions. So I, personally, I'm not concerned with the frivolous kind of an action. If we don't have the right for anybody to amend something, we could potentially end up a situation where somebody omitted something significant from the SAP. We inadvertently eliminate, I don't know, one position altogether, and that couldn't be corrected on, on the fly. It couldn't be, it wouldn't be considered as frivolous error. So I look at those two issues. So let's, let's go to the other side of the, the other option here. If the Personnel Board were to decide not to support this, my request, and they were to bring forward the SAP, including Section 18, is Section 18?
Section 18, yeah.
Section 18. I have complied with Section 18 because I've given them notice of my intent to modify the SAP. So it's my intent that if the Personnel Board does not support removing Section 18, then I will be within the rights to make an amendment on the floor and bring this to the hall to ask them to delete Section 18. I've complied with the bylaw as it stands right now. I'm not trying to stir the pot, I'm not anything else. I just, in reading this over a year, a couple of years ago with the moderator, I said, you know, it struck me, if we go back on the time machine a little bit, remember a few years ago CPC used to come in that you can't modify our articles, you have to vote them up or down? And that always kind of stuck in my craw that, no, it shouldn't be an all or nothing kind of a thing. And it turned out that wasn't the case, anyway. So it's just kind of a simple thing. I just think that the hall should have the right to govern themselves. And I, trust me, I appreciate the work that the Personnel Board does on this. I also appreciate the work that the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals do with the complexities of their issues as well. And we trust the hall to modify those. There's nothing to say that somebody couldn't bring an amendment forward or bylaw forward to prohibit the hall from modifying a Planning Board or ZBA-sponsored article as we have here. This is self-limiting. The state, there's nothing in the statute, the state statutes that requires this. This is just something we put in on our own. And that's the background upon this. I just think we trust the hall to make the right decision. That's really what it comes down to.
Right, that helps. Al?
I'm now less confused. Yeah, I'm now less confused.
Margaret.
What's the thought of the Personnel Board about this?
We discussed it very briefly. When Jim originally brought it forward, there was one member in particular that felt like they needed to think about it, and therefore, we tabled it at the time. We are meeting Monday morning. We'll take a motion on it. Then, be up or down, but I think you've heard from the clerk how he plans to proceed. If we vote nay, if we vote in affirmative, then we know it will be printed in the warrant. So I think my ask of all of you is, if you have a strong view that we can bring back, because I think it's important that we build consensus around direction that we go, to the extent possible, you know, if there's any strong views you want me to relay back to the board, that's another reason to use this forum here.
Right, so let's see who else has questions, and we'll see what the view may be at this point. Sam?
I guess I'm a little conflicted about this in the sense that I understand the point of having town meeting have an opportunity to change most anything that involves money. On the other hand, I see that SAP is, from a structural standpoint, is being somewhat different from most of the other pieces that people focus on. And so I think there is great value in having a Personnel Board who looks at how all the pieces of the SAP work together. So you don't have inconsistencies, or this particular group of people over here is, is out of sync with this particular group over there. And that's a hard thing to do on town meeting floor. So it seems to me there is real value in having an SAP that hangs together across all the dimensions of it, that the Personnel Board spends a lot of time trying to make sure is the case. So to me, it's a lot different than going into the zoning bylaw, for example, and changing a setback number, for example. That tends to have far less trickle effect through the rest of the code. It's not perfect. So that seems to me to argue, to have, quotes, the, I don't know, professional view of that thing, to make sure it all works together, which makes me nervous about doing town meeting votes on the floor. So I guess I wind up on the side of saying, leave it with the Personnel Board.
Andrew?
Well, just practically, I think I'm just going to wait until the Personnel Board takes a position on this before I can make up my own mind here, just taking it step by step. This is reminding me of something, I think, a little bit related. Is there some provision in the SAP that also deals with, kind of an unexpected situation arises in the middle of the year, and then some adjustment to a classification needs to be made? Then is there some way that?
We, we have the ability to add job descriptions and move during the year, but it has to be ratified at the next town meeting.
In order for it to continue into the next, okay.
Correct. But there's a whole procedure in there. I forget what section. It's in, off the top of my head. I could scroll through here quickly. I think the other thing, Jim, when you come to Personnel Board, that may help, you know, thread the needle between what Sam is maybe suggesting, what you're suggesting, is you seem to be going after, like, clear and obvious just mistakes, right? Like, just someone had a lazy finger, and they delete a line in the personnel plan that clearly was there the last year. There's never any discussion about eliminating that position, and then just magically, when the warrant gets printed, it's not there. Like, that's, you know, one item. Like, I think there, there could be a middle ground where you just say for obvious, you know, and that would put a lot of judgment with the moderator, but for obvious items that were unintentional typographical sort of errors, that amendments are allowed, but substantive. I'm not saying I'm advocating for that. I'm just trying to figure out how we bring this, bring this forward cohesively.
I guess I go back to Mr. Starver's comment. If there was somebody who was trying to run amok and, you know, do something that was nonsensical, I look at that as the role of the Chair of the Personnel Board to be able to explain to the hall why that's a bad idea. And I think that, that can be done. It's not the end of the world if this doesn't go through, but I just, I lean towards giving the hall more authority. I just think that that's a better form of democracy. And we live with the consequences of the vote. If we shoot ourselves in the foot, it's our foot we shot.
And I generally lean in that direction pretty strongly myself. This seems to me to be a little bit different case, so judgment call.
So I was going to say the same thing you just said. The Personnel Board could then, you know, basically tell the town meeting why they didn't support whatever was being amended. But I was going to say the same thing you said, too, when you started. I remember one night where absolutely the SAP bylaw was amended on the floor. I don't remember the desertary that did it, but I know what got amended, and I remember who was the moderator, and I can remember exactly when it happened that night. So I know it happened that night, and that was pre-Seminar, for sure. So it definitely has happened before, maybe erroneously, but it has happened, for sure. So I'm, sorry, Jason, I don't know if you're going to get a real strong opinion here.
That's fine. Jim asked for, he sent an email to you asking for discussion of it, so, and we've clearly not, we've reached consensus on a lot of other things. We have not fully closed the loop on this, this topic yet.
Yes, I think we're going to throw it back to you to see what you guys think, before we do. All right, so we'll probably vote on it next Tuesday, because you will have met by then, right? And we can, we can hear what you could say. Okay.
How about a little more on printing the SAP and the, and the bylaws? I'm still a little confused about pros and cons on that one.
Having listened to the discussion, I think I'm leaning in Mr. Haggerty's direction as somebody who has occasionally offered stunningly bad ideas to town meeting and been promptly disposed of. I have a pretty good, healthy respect for the collective wisdom, you know. A town meeting sometimes doesn't do what I like, but I think they're, they get it right most of the time.
I think I'll label my position the Hamilton Protection Provision.
Well, Al, you've had quite a few successes, too. So I'm leaning toward it, but I'd like to hear what you guys say. Okay, so enough of that one for the moment, Jim?
Sure.
Okay with that one? So that's the only one you want to address, or there's another one?
No, I brought up the motion of, the thought of having the SAP printed in the bylaws. First, holding back up and say that the, it's kind of an interesting situation. The SAP has to be approved at town meeting, but it's not approved by the Attorney General. Just an interesting aside, little bit of trivia, but there you go. But it's a crazy situation that you have one line in the SAP, in the bylaw, excuse me, in the bylaw that says, the SAP, the language says, basically it says it's on file in the clerk's office, and it has been the Personnel Board that has been giving the SAP to the clerk, which makes no sense at all because the clerk keeps a record of what's done at town meeting and such. Yet, so how do you find the SAP if you have a question on it?
Just say, go look at the warrant.
Well, but I, I just think it makes sense to put it, that people can find it easier. We add it to the town code. That's all, just to make it easy.
Oh, you're trying to do is add it to the code?
That's all it is.
Is there any downside to that? I mean, I don't understand what.
Costs us a little bit, little bit more for the editing the first time. Not a big deal.
The one downside that I can think of has to do with, you know, the risk of just forgetting to do it and it just not happening. And the practical reason I remember that is, remember the old kerfuffle in 2018 or so about the ZBA quorum issue, right, where there was a whole controversy generated because the town code said one thing about what the ZBA's requirement was, even though that was not actually a, like a town bylaw. It was, it was basically just a ZBA regulation that had been amended several times since then and never actually updated. So that's just an illustration of not, when you were the town clerk of where things, you had a practice of this should be put in the town code, and it just didn't happen because the more things you commit to putting in the town code, the greater chance of.
It actually, I'm glad you brought that up because it actually, I have the opposite take on that.
All right.
Because it would be part of the process of what's approved at the town meeting, and it's all sent at one time. The vendor, the vendor, one more time, let me try this, one more time. I feel like I'm stuttering here, sorry. The vendor updates eight to 10 weeks afterward the Attorney General approves the documents. So this would be included in the town code section. For the life of me, I don't understand, this is a discussion for another day, why we have Section 3, which are rules and regulations of boards and committees, which don't, to me, that makes no sense having in the town code whatsoever. And they're only updated twice a year, so if your board were to create a new regulation, it won't get updated for eight months, nine months. That's a whole different story. But it's all, it would be all part of the same process at one time, call it a day. But I just think, not the end of the world. I just think it makes it easier for people to see it. That's all it is. And the extra costs, you know, maybe a couple hundred extra bucks in the editing cost initially, no big deal.
Does the Personnel Board have an opinion on this one?
This one we were fine with.
Okay. Sounds like it makes sense.
I am, too. This one makes a lot of sense to me. Okay, so that's the two that you want to talk about? Okay. All right, so back to Jason for the others.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Are there any questions in the other ones? I'm happy to run through them, but I would call most of them very self-explanatory.
I mean, we already, for example, 20B, we already did that here. So we approved those, so I don't know why we questioned those, right? The tree warden from four to eight, and the veterans agent up to 17, five. We did that one.
I have a question, sort of a high-level question.
Go ahead, Sam.
I, I continue to get questions from people about salary adjustments that need to be made that were out of sync in some places, allegedly. And I've heard Personnel Board talking about that from time to time. Is there a plan now to actually address that?
Well, that is Part 2 of our agenda, called the Salary Survey, and the, the separate article, I think, would probably address that question.
Okay.
So I will happily go into a lot of detail on that.
Have you said all you want to say about this? Because I thought you said that.
I don't have anything to say. The, the bylaw changes are not.
They're cut and dry.
Right. They are, of my time on the Personnel Board, and even studying it before I was on it, this is probably the cleanest, simplest set of changes we have, absent what we've discussed for the last 15 minutes.
Go ahead, Margaret.
One tiny little question. On 20B, the tree warden from four to eight, and the veterans agent from 15 to 17, and it's been at least seven years, do we start getting behind again and then just sort of catch up in seven years, maybe? Or is there a better way to cycle that in?
So I believe, I believe I raised this when we talked about this with both Bill and Brian in their respective roles or appointing, roles. Our intention is to try to align these now, like that there would, whatever we agree on a COLA each year going forward, that there would at least be a discussion of whether that COLA should apply to the stipend as well. We can debate that as the number goes up, and who holds the role, and what the responsibilities are of the role, but we're at least going to have a discussion every year, just like we do about every other number in the Personnel Plan.
Are there any other stipends in the SAP besides these two?
There's about four or five others. Emergency, emergency management, energy stipend, energy management stipend, and there's a few others, smaller ones.
So you'll update those going forward? Your plan is to try to keep those?
I think we'll at least engage in a discussion of making sure they're still fit for purpose, and then whether there should be a COLA attached to them. They're obviously not going to be nice round numbers once we start applying a frac, a percentage to them.
Well, you could do what you kind of do in the tax code. If it doesn't go up by 500 bucks, don't do it. Wait till it hits 500 bucks, then do it. So you can do it that way. Whatever, up to you.
Some of these are not as big as the numbers you're seeing on the piece of paper either. They're $1,000 to $2,000.
So you're happy with this?
Yeah.
All right, so let's move on and talk about the pay classification study.
So I understand there was discussion at your budget Saturday meeting around the separate article that the Personnel Board has brought forward this year, which is basically a paying class study. It is early. We fully acknowledge that. We're required to do it every four years. We're only two years into this, this one. When we did the last one, two years ago, there were significant flaws to the execution of it. I don't think anyone would disagree with, with, with that. It was a newer vendor to town, and just the process did not achieve the results that I think we were looking for, but we had to see the process through to comply with the requirements. As Sam noted, we hear very often from certain employees that they don't believe they're being paid commensurate to their peers in other communities. I think we also need to acknowledge that every role, regardless of title, in a community, has different roles and responsibilities depending upon the size of a department and the size of a community, and all things aren't always created equally. The largest bone of contention that we faced in the last year is, as you know, this board and other boards have hired a significant number of external resources. A lot of case times, they were department heads, right, which are usually some of our higher graded individuals. In some instances, they were brought in right at the midpoint. Other instances, they were brought in above the midpoint. We have long-tenured employees in that same grouping of, of employee classification that are below the midpoint, still, after instances of five, 10, 15, 20 years. Some may say, how do we get to that point, and how does that happen? Well, there's a few things. I think anyone that does hiring, either in the private or public sector, knows that when you go outside, there's usually a premium to going outside. That's nothing new. It has nothing to do with the current job market, but that's just what happens more often than not. Is that right? We can all sit here and debate that all we want, but that's not what we're trying to solve for. What we are trying to solve for is make sure we're still within the range of what the position calls for, regardless of someone's tenure at the town. One could argue that turnover in some times is good. Turnover in other times is a really bad idea, right? Whenever you have turnover, you lose institutional knowledge. So the reason the Personnel Board has engaged in a discussion around this all year is, you know, what is fair to our employees, and making sure that we are retaining all of the talent that we should be retaining is our number-one objective. Doing a salary survey, though, is not perfect. It is going to solve some percentage of the problem, and it will create another set of problems. If you take a step back to how we got here, Mark, you can correct me on the dates, but in and around 2013, the town went away from a step system for our non-union employees. That's how we got here. So anyone hired between 2013 and the salary study that we did a couple of years ago only was seeing what we'll call a COLA every year for each of their, their, so they were getting no credit for their longevity, other than what I'll call some very small longevity stipends that we have in the personnel bylaw. We fixed that with the last iteration. We introduced a 15-step system at each grade. So as long as someone gets a satisfactory performance evaluation, they get a 2% bump every year. performance evaluation, they get a 2% bump every year, regardless of what we do with a COLA. Right? So we are now paying a 2% pay increase for tenure experience in the role. So obviously, that takes a 15-year timeframe to go from steps one to 15. We had to-
They automatically move up a step every July 1st.
Yeah, automatically, as long as they get a satisfactory performance rating.
Okay.
Um, in addition, obviously, if we decide that inflationary factors dictate a COLA, which we have this year, obviously, um, there's an incremental to that. So this year, if someone is not at step 15, which we have very few, if, if, I think there's one, uh, individuals, they, they get the 2% step if they get that satisfactory rating, plus the 3% COLA. So we're seeing about a 5% increase in their, um, base pay in, in this particular year. That's how we got off, off track. So you have that group of population that was hired between 2013 and about 2022, 2023, that we were never recognizing for their, their time and grade. Um, our simplest, non-biased way of doing this is to just do the paying class study early, which would reset our four-year clock. The bias is important, right? That's the reason to go outside, but that's $25,000 going to a consultant that's going to come in, do a job. Obviously, we'd have to manage better this time, and then they would go along their way, and we would implement their recommendations. I think I, and I think your Personnel Director, share the concern that that's not going to solve everyone's problem, and we will likely create an issue with some employees that are perfectly content and happy today, uh, that are not content, that would not be content in whatever new system comes out of that. We've talked about alternatives, because there is some, um, portion of the Personnel Board that really just wanted to spend zero on this. We are certainly united that we need to do something, uh, to at least get our employees comfortable that they're, they're, they're in the right spot. And that's, again, our number-one objective that we're unified around. The, the alternatives to doing a paying class, if you just said, "We're not spending $25,000, we don't have a budget," is, um, we could direct the, the Personnel Director with the support of the Personnel Board to look at what we think our largest potential issues are, like which either positions or groups of positions, and try to self-study it. We, we beta-tested this already. Um, we sent Mark and Vanessa out to a number of comparable communities, and the data's all over the place. Um, it is completely all over the place. That's what the consultant's going to go do too, by the way. Right? Like, they're going to go and go to our peer population, they're going to see that the same position in one town may make $1, next town it may make $5, and next town it may make $20. I'm obviously using fictional numbers to not call it any individual position. That's, that's the crux of this. So this is certainly an art. This is not a science. Whatever we do here is not perfect, but the Personnel Board needs to do something, we believe, to maintain the satisfaction of, of our employees. But we don't want to go overstep it and just try to make every single person happy because they think they have, because you've all managed employees at certain points in your career. You always will have a fraction of your population that no matter what you do for them is, is not, it's not going to be perfect. Our goal is to make sure we can stand behind an analysis that's fair, it's equitable, and unbiased. So that's the position we're in, um, right now, and why we thought it was important to bring it forward, for the town to decide how valuable, uh, this is, um, to them. But obviously, Advisory and yourselves as a select board should weigh in on that in the broader landscape.
So if this, it's on the warrant right now, it's in the budget, if this were to pass, and we were to fund it with free cash so it could be used on April 8th, um, how long do you believe realistically it would take to engage the contractor and actually have it done, complete, reviewed, and useful?
So we actually did an RFP process earlier this year to see if we could accomplish something within our own budget this year. Uh, we have, we, we know kind of the indicative cost, hence why we're here with an article. Uh, my thought would be, is if you all decide to print it in the warrant, uh, I think there's no reason why we wouldn't direct the Personnel Director to run a procurement process before town meeting, so that if the town decides to fund it, right, and obviously, all RFPs are subject to funding, we would be ready to go in, in mid-April. It's a couple-month process. It involves interviews of employees. It involves, obviously, comparison to comparable communities. And I think it also involves careful consideration of the scope that we ultimately put into the engagement letter to make sure that we are getting and targeting the areas of, of greatest focus and greatest feedback, to Sam's point, that we've heard.
I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, so we'll, we'll see in a second, but I do believe there are some, um, inequities that need to be rectified, and that hopefully this would help us do that. So as far as I'm concerned, the sooner the better. Um, we don't necessarily want to bring forth money articles in the fall, but we could if we, if we had to, and there is, you know, not a huge impact on it. So that's why I'd like to get it done. If this gets approved, I'd like to see it done sooner than later, to give us a chance to implement it sooner than later. Al?
Um, are we losing people to-
How many people have you lost this year, Mark?
Not counting police.
SAP, SAP employees.
So SAP? Yeah, SAP employees, yeah.
Eight?
Ten. And how many full-time employees do you have in the SAP?
Fifty, sixty.
Sixty.
Yeah, that's about, yeah.
So six.
Yeah.
And, uh, are those people going to greener pastures for financial reasons or for professional reasons? Uh, you know, people sometimes leave because, you know, they're, it's a promotion versus, you know, "I can simply make more money doing the same job elsewhere." That's, I'm sort of trying to get a, a feel for that.
Uh, Personnel Board is not involved with exit interviews, so ask Mark.
I think it's, I, I think the majority of it is the upward mobility. Um, there have been some that, you know, that have left because they can make more in similar positions in other communities. So, I think it's a mix.
And I think it's also relevant to be concerned about some that you think might be in this boat of needing adjustment that, um, are at risk of losing, um, that we don't want to lose.
Yeah, I worry.
So it's not just those that are left, but there's also, um, the concern about others that might, um, if we don't do something, um, just feel compelled to, do have to change jobs.
Yeah, I worry some may be looking, which is hugely costly. You lose somebody who's doing a great job, well-experienced. I mean, the chance that you can replace him with somebody new is far less than 100% at the same level, so hidden cost.
Yeah, I, I'm generally, um, observe that turnover in the public sector is far lower than the private sector. Um, so if we've lost six people who were subject to salary administration, I, I, I think that is evidence that there may be a market adjustment that's necessary. And, um-
So do you support doing the study?
Yes.
Marguerite?
I support it just, um, anecdotally. I've listened to too many people who feel that they've been not treated well. Not through any fault of anybody, but just because of the way it came out.
The process, the system, yeah. Yeah. I guess I'm supportive of the study. I wonder, is there a, um, a more direct route to the finish line on this thing? I mean, I think, for example, a longevity adjustment or something like that could adjust some of the complaints that I've heard about the process. I'm, I'm assuming that you folks have talked about something like that.
We've certainly talked about raising the longevity stipend earlier this year. Uh, it didn't go very far, because it, um, solved the wrong problems. Uh, like it, like it just was, we certainly would have had people happy if we adjusted that number. Any, no one's going to say no to additional-
It's $1,000, right, right now?
Yeah. So even if you, even if you start, yeah, even if you start doing multipliers of that, uh, you, you got to look at how it breaks down, you got to look at your, actually, your population as it breaks down by tenure.
Right.
Right? Some people have moved roles within town, right? So they have longevity to the town, but not necessarily longevity to the position. Then you have others that have just been in the same position for a very long time and done an amazing job at that, that role too. So I think, Sam, to your point, I certainly know where the issues are. Um, I think some are not going to be a surprise, some would be a surprise. We kind of heard Kathy mentioning some, Marguerite's mentioning some, you've mentioned some. I don't know, I haven't talked to them, and we're not going to start exchanging titles tonight, but like, it may be the same people, or it may be, uh, very different groups. Uh, I think there is a way to, to do this without the study, like, I'll be very honest, but we would need a group of individuals that are unbiased to the outcome, and, um, you know, just even, I just looked, the town administrator sitting next to you, he's the appointing authority for the town. He's also the personnel, he, he's like, he's making recommendations to you as the appointing authority. You're his boss, right? He's bringing forward most of the candidates. They indirectly or directly report to him in some way, shape, or form on a daily basis, versus you have others that are appointed by elected boards and committees and/or indi, right? So you just have this, the way we're structured. So, I think the longer-term discussion we need to have, salary survey or not, and this is an after-town-meeting thing, is what is the role of the Personnel Board? We entertained an initial discussion with the, um, moderator as our appointing authority a couple of meetings ago. Uh, but I think it's, this goes to the town administrative bylaw, right? Times have changed. Some of you were part of that process before. I think, you know, our request would be that you, you think about what we can do there. Most of what's inhibiting us as a Personnel Board is we try to respect, confident, we can't do anything executive. Most of the stuff we do, we can't be doing an executive session. We can't come out and really discuss positions, and even when we do, it's ugly. Like, none of us want to be sitting there for that discussion because you're not going to make these people happy. Uh, we need to really consider, like, if we changed how the Personnel Director position worked, and what the responsibilities were just for personnel, a lot of this would operate a lot closer to what most of you were used to in the private sector, where, you know, someone comes to leave the town, Mark has no recourse, right? And if that's that person that we're all, you know, thinking about today, that just gets a better offer tomorrow, Mark has absolutely no recourse to deal with that in the moment. Should he, is the question, right? So like retention, all of you in your private sector jobs, you have checkbooks, and you, you figure out what the right method is. And sometimes it's not just a check, it's sometimes the working conditions, it's, there's a lot of intangibles that people put, um, you know, to these benefits too. So we think there's a much more, a much broader conversation regardless of where this article goes. But with the Personnel Board committed to earlier in the year, when we started approving requests for people from the outside to come in above the midpoint, we committed to the employees that we were going to look at this, and we were going to make recommendations on how to look at it. That RFP had come in at a different price, we would be coming forward, propose changes now. Your budget wouldn't look prettier, I'm not going to lie, right? And you'd be dealing with a different issue. But we just need to decide, um, how aggressive we want to be, is the decision that's in front of the town.
Yep. But again, I see that the study as being, um, um, sort of insurance that there is consistency applied to the process, which is very valuable in this kind of circumstance. Uh, my real sort of bottom-line question is, are you reasonably confident that if that process goes forward, as expected here, that the result is going to deal with the, the stresses that are in the current system effectively, at least for the most part?
I think it's going to deal with the themes.
Okay.
I'm not going to sit here and commit that every employee's happy with three of them.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask that, but-
I'm sorry, and, and that's the problem, um, not to be the wet blanket, but, um, I've been through a lot of these paying class studies, and at the beginning of every one, I kind of mentally will identify those positions, those groups of employees that I really think need to be addressed through that. Um, I have yet to have any level of success in correctly picking what the consultant sees, because as we've talked about, there needs to be the lack of bias.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, there is a level of frustration, and so, you know, out of, say, 60 employees, maybe six or eight or 10 have some level of adjustment out of a paying class study. And then there's the morale issue, right, for the rest of the employees. So this is why some of those discussions have happened about, "Well, why can't we just adjust who we think we need to adjust?" Well, because then you're not adjusting the people who may think that they should be adjusted, but are, you know, you're not addressing them as well. So, that's why we use the outside consultant, but again, you're not guaranteed-
Sure.
-the results, you know, and, and you go in, I go in lowering my expectations that, you know, it's really only going to be, you know, six, eight, 10 people, 10 positions, rather, not pe, positions, that'll be addressed in this study. And, um, you know, and, and the rest of the people are not going to be adjusted.
Is there a better way to do it? Besides what Jason's suggesting, which sounds like a very sensible way, but we're not going to do that in the next month or two here, probably.
I, I think it's, you know, it, it's the bias issue, you know, and it's, and it is, it is difficult as to what Jason said, and Jason started to go down a whole other rabbit hole, which I'm not going to join him on, but, um, but I do think it is a little bit difficult when you've got a lot of different, um, um, hiring authorities, so to speak, you know, that, that are able to do cer, so it, it adds into the difficulty of trying to eliminate that bias.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, Andrew?
Okay, so I, I'm okay with, um, doing the study, I just have a, a different question. So this discussion made me think about the Personnel Board's budget, operating budget, and I just pulled it up, and it made me realize, I'm not very familiar with what, what, uh, the Personnel Board budget is actually used for. So I see there's two lines. One is for consulting and professional services. Looks like there's 2,500 in that for this, this year, and then 7,000 for workplace development. So what is that money used for? Has it been used? I'm thinking, is there any way, because if there's some money left over from the Personnel Board budget right now, is there a way some of that could be applied to just reduce the cost of this a little bit?
Uh, yeah, if done in the fiscal year, because that budget doesn't roll. Um, so the, the bigger number in there, the work, workforce development, we, uh, every meeting, and it doesn't happen every meeting, but Vanessa and Mark bring forward a series of proposals they think would benefit the employees on a broad basis. And it implies to, to both union and non-union employees. So it's not just the SAP employees, but there are a series of programs that they see as being beneficial to the employees. Um, I think there's been a customer service one recently, there's some wellness ones, um, how to deal with, you know, the angry resident that, that comes into the town offices. So, uh, we sponsor those programs through our budget and make sure that they're open to all, not just our SAP employees. That's the majority of what our budget goes to. We do have some, we do have a, a policy related to tuition, um, that's also part of it. We also sponsor, uh, someone wants to go get a certificate through the MMA that's helpful to their current role, we do those through Suffolk or any of those other programs. That's what the majority of the budget goes to. And then we have a small consultant spend line. We were trying to minimize what we spent this year to, to do that, but, I mean, the budget came in over 20K, which is why we have a article for 25K, but that's the answer to your question, Andrew.
Okay. Thanks.
So I support the article, and we're going to, we're actually going to vote on this one later, um, because I thought we'd have enough information talking to Jason to be able to vote. So it sounds like you're going to get a positive vote here. And then we're going to meet with Advisory next Tuesday, and we'll see what they say. But, um, it's going to be on the warrant, it looks like, based on what you heard here, because we put in on the warrant, and then we'll, we'll, we'll see what Advisory's got to say about it. So, so far, so good.
Madam Chair, can I, one of the things is, uh, off of what Andrew said, and just to take advantage, because I've got Jason and I've got John Thorburn, um, here from Personnel Board. Um, they do support a lot of the trainings and everything that's done, and a lot of them are individuals, but, um, we try to, and I think Personnel Board would like to apply them to as big a group as possible. Um, so I just want to, you know, thank, um, Jason and John, and I will thank the Personnel Board on Monday, um, as a whole, um, for this, uh, for the funding of the recent de-escalation training that we did with Jean Hurdle. Um, you know, again, I'll give Vanessa kudos. Vanessa helps, you know, to push these things and identifies the things that are important, and the employees came to her on this one. Um, we had over 35 people at this training. This is the biggest training we've had, a number of employees, and it was the diversity of the employees that came from all the different departments, um, you know, and it really was nice to see, um, and people really appreciated it. So I just wanted to take a quick moment just to publicly thank, you know, thank you for, you know, for supporting that, and, and again, let you know, it was very well-attended.
Great.
All right. So you're happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, Jason wears multiple hats for the town, thankfully. So while he's here, we thought we'd at least run through what's proposed on the capital budget for this year, as far as what's, we think's going to be in the article, based on our meeting on the 8th, and a few adjustments that have been done since then. based on our meeting on the eighth, and a few adjustments that have been done since then. And actually discuss them in front of Jason, he, he hasn't called a meeting with Capitol tonight, but he's going to take this back to Capitol, and they're going to basically confirm again that they either agree or disagree with what.
Yeah, I did post an agenda, but I don't know if I have a quorum. It takes a lot to get a quorum these days.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see one, yeah.
So Kathy, before you walk through them, I just, two things on capital. One, we will, we have, we just got the list yesterday of where, where everything's at. So I'm certainly happy to give a personal opinion, but I would want Capitol to vote on wherever you're landing as a finality to the process. I would also be remiss not to acknowledge the two open seats right now. Given the level of decisions that this community is about to make, and given the desire for people to have a say in them, come join us. Obviously, you're the appointing board, but we welcome a diversity of thought, we've always had that, and we need that now more than ever, because we haven't made tough decisions in the last couple of years on Capitol, we're about to as a community. So we just, we, we really need that to be what we're supposed to be per the town bylaw. So I use this as my selfless recruiting exercise tonight as well.
That's, that's great, I'm glad you did that. And I also want to thank, while we're doing this, Joe Palmer, he's been on Capitol since the very beginning, when it was a ad hoc, and then when it became permanent. So he has, I don't know if he's ever, he used to do a lot of minutes, so he has truly been very important to this committee from the first time that it was formed. So thank you, Joe, for what you did. All right, so hopefully somebody will hear this tonight, and raise your hand, right? Okay, so now moving on to the actual, what we think is going to be on the warrant as far as Capitol goes. So if everybody wants to look at, you've got the most current package, this is a sheet you should look at, that's got, it's kind of small.
Yes.
Got it? Okay, so let's just go through this one at a time and see if anybody has any issue with what's on here now, then we'll discuss those. If not, we'll just keep going. Okay, so the first two are just standard Capitol items. Twenty-five thousand dollars to allow the Recreation Commission to spend what they need to to work on the fields beyond the normal maintenance. We added that last year for the first time, and so the intent was to make that a recurring article. So that's what the twenty-five is. The next one is in the same vein, this has been around for a while, and I believe we can give Al credit for this from his time on advisory. I think he wanted a bigger number, but that's what this is designed to do, is to give John Parent and his group money to use when unexpected things happen during the year, which they always do when you've got a large amount of old buildings. So, and this number's worked for him for a while, I don't think he's ever come close to breaching it. I think he uses most of it, but it's a pretty good number, so he's, I think he's happy with that continuing at that rate. Let's see, so the next one, we took out the roof, our, John took out the roof. So everything on here is something that the department head has adjusted either on February eighth or afterwards, so this is not something that's been crammed down their throats at all. So John took that one out and said, put that on fiscal year twenty-seven. The flag school, we had on the eighth reduced, John originally asked for a hundred-seventy-five K, that's what Capitol had put forth. At that meeting, we decided to reduce it to a hundred. John quickly called and said, I can't do it for a hundred, I've got to have at least a hundred-fifty. So we've put it back to a hundred-fifty, since, and Al's talked to him as far as why he needs a one-fifty. Al may disagree with keeping it on here, but I think what's on here is the right number as far as doing what John has to do to get the flag school ready to allow youth and family services to move in, as far as the interior of the building. Does not work on the exterior, it is for the interior. So you want to talk about that one right now?
I spoke to John for about half an hour, and regrettably, the number is roughly right.
Okay, moving on, so the next two we took off with Bill Kundif's permission on the eighth. So those two have been taken off and moved to another year. The fire medical committee, we didn't really talk a lot about that one, no one had much issue with that one, so that one stayed as-is. The deputy chief car was added once we approved adding the deputy position. He needs a car, so this is what got added. Although I have heard rumors, Jason, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, among your many duties, that the car that you have in Boxborough was eighty and not ninety that you got recently, so this may be a little bit high.
I think you'd want the chief to weigh in on what he's, like, how he's specking his own car.
Okay.
Because everyone, every town uses every vehicle differently.
We'll talk to him, make sure we got a good number there.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. We took out the, remember with Bill, there were three basically vehicles, and we said, Bill, can you give up one? And he gave up that one, which I assume will be on for next year. The one, next, one, two, three, four, five are DPW. So those are as Bill requested, so we didn't do anything with those on the eighth, we left those on. The next one is the normal amount that we put in roadway funds that gets added with this Chapter ninety money, so that's just a normal number that we've had for as long as I can remember. The next one did get reduced by Bill after the meeting. He reduced the Cinco fix on Central Street from three hundred to two fifty, I guess he got a better number. So that's his new number is a two-fifty. So more to management, he gave, you know, he made a case for why he needs to get started on complying with the regs and laws that surround that. So we left that one alone. Let's see, the next one is the, this is hard to read, is this the flashing lights?
Flashing lights, three hundred thousand.
I can't even read my glasses on. Okay, so this one, we've taken out completely. Remember, we had six sets of flashing lights that the state was going to give us. He identified six crosswalks, so Fay School, St. Mark's, Woodward Two, Finn One in front of Marlow's Cafe, those were the six. He now, so we agreed, we were not going to fund the ones for the two private schools that we could tell them about, they could, if they wanted, if they could, they would have to pay for the installation, which I think they're going to do, by the way. The other ones, we left in temporarily, Bill then reduced the amount. He actually checked with VHB, and the amount was a lot less than he thought. But he now says, don't worry about it, I can deal with this with my Chapter ninety money. So we've taken this off completely, and doesn't mean they're not going to happen, but does not happen as far as this budget goes. All right. All right, the pipe camera kit, he had taken that one off, so that's okay.
That was subject to a grant, I think they already had to pay for it.
Not the grant.
So now the next ones are schools. And so what we did on salary is a little different than what you see now. So we left Finn with one thing, which is replacing a floor that I think's buckling because of water seeping in, so we left that. The next one is Woodward, needed some money for some technological infrastructure equipment, so I assume that's laptops and things like that.
You think classroom stuff, not, you know, actual laptops.
All right, so there's that, and then we did put in, I'm going back up to, I'm not going to forget the curtain, I'm coming back to that one. So then we did add the hundred thousand dollars needed to study and design the roof for Trotter, because we're now in the MSBA repair program that would pay for probably, I don't know, thirty-five to forty percent of this, and we didn't want to lose that grant, so that's why this one needed to be in there. So that's what this pays for. And the last one is, we had originally taken out this one and left in the tech infrastructure for Trotter. I talked to Greg Martineau afterwards, and I think I talked to Chelsea Melonowski too, who's chair of the K through eight, and I think they both said they believe the curtain at Trotter is a hazard, which I guess means it may be close to falling down. So they'd rather keep the curtain for the Trotter auditorium in and get rid of the, and trade for the Trotter technological money. So the fifty-five goes in, the sixty goes out. Okay, so schools lost some things, they still, each school has at least one thing, Trotter's got two things. Okay, so is everybody at this point okay with that list? Okay?
Yep.
So this started at, Jason, check me here, over three million dollars, and now we're down to a million four-four-seven, so we've cut it a lot. It still has a big impact on the budget, because the prior three years, we've used ARPA money. And so this line item has jumped up a lot from last year, which is part of what's caused the budget increase. But we knew this was coming, when ARPA money ran out, there's this, I don't know what else you can do about it. Going forward, we wouldn't expect as much of a jump year to year as we've had from last year to this year. So Jason, anything you want to say about that list?
Nothing specifically about the list, but I think, as you think about the warrant in particular, I'm still scarred from my experience a couple of years ago in the Algonquin stage about the amendments that had to be made to it. Now, I'm not hearing any controversy here, obviously, to the extent that advisory brings forward items, but you do have some items in here, like the fire deputy chief car, that are tied to another, tied to another item, right? So I don't know what you're, like, if you're going to actually include the fire deputy chief in your operating budget, or you're going to separately present that. But I would think you would want to package these things together, right? If the town approves a fire deputy chief, they're approving a salary line item, they're approving a benefits line item, and they're approving a capital line item. They're approving like, that, that, that position, and that's the totality of it. What I would prefer to avoid from a pure capital perspective is if the town agrees with the deputy chief position, they agree with it in totality, as opposed to having to start to amend things on the floor and start confusing the numbers depending upon the outcome of the budget. That's ultimately up to how you all produce the warrant. Just, I know I've mentioned this before, is like, when you start tying things to positions, and if you're worried that something does or doesn't have support, which I don't know where you're standing on all that, you know, that's just a tool in your toolbox as you design the warrant.
See, I hadn't thought about doing what you just said, I thought about it because you had suggested that we carve out the actual car, the vehicle. Because if the deputy doesn't get...
You can do that too, I was just saying...
Because if you carve out the actual salary too, then the budget itself is not correct. You know, what you're voting on is not really reflective of the total budget. So you're kind of not being realistic as far as what that budget increase is either. So it kind of maybe masks what you're really doing with the fire department.
You'd have to show the incremental, right? You say, you could have it as a base budget, and then if we add this, this is what the incremental is on top of what we've already told you, and this is how you get to the bottom line. Or you can just carve out the car too, right? So that if the town chooses not to support it, the car is separate. If the town chooses it, they can still decide on the car separate to that.
So you're referring to your hour and a half discussion on the Johnson Road culvert, where you set up, stood up there and took that very stoically until we finally got through with that one?
And then I stood up there five, five minutes, I'm nearing.
That's right, that's right.
I, I think what you could do is put some form of an asterisk next to that, that says it's simply subject to the approval, you know, of the assistant chief's position.
Well, the budget would go first, so you would know before you got to this whether that got approved or not, and then you could amend this too, and just take it out if you had, that's one way.
So I think procedurally, we just need to be aligned on who's making the motion, whether it's me or a select board member, and what the motion is based on the outcome of the preceding article.
The way that the, I mean, the fire budget, first thing that happens is to see if someone holds it, right?
I guess what I'm...
Because it's in the operational budget, the new...
Well, the, the car's not in the operational budget.
I understand that, I understand that, but then if, if, if someone holds it, and then someone speaks to the operational piece of it, then it makes sense to also highlight that these two things go together.
Talk about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess what my proposal was, again, sitting through people trying to do math on town meeting floor in the effort to streamline town meeting. You have a base budget that's like, based on the services we're providing to the community today, right? If you just present that budget and you say it's X percent increase, and you have additional items that you're saying are new to the community, this being one, just because it involves capital, you could systematically go through each of these, instead of someone having to try to make a motion on each of these topics depending upon their view, and, and stage through it. You present your overall budget as a one-claps thing, but you have separate motions. Again, it's an option you have, instead of having multiple people stand up there and try to do the math on the fly, that never bodes well.
All right, so we'll think about...
That's up to you. But I just proposed that, that the chief has been very adamant that obviously he will pull that article if the staffing doesn't get supported. If the staffing gets supported, he's adamant that person needs a car.
All right, two more things to at least mention. We did pull, these things have been approved, but instead of buying them outright, we have moved them to the leasing schedule. This was something Andrew Faff strongly supported on the eighth, and that is the front-end loader for the DPW and the utility dump. So those are on the leasing piece of it. Want to speak to that at all? You don't have to.
I will, I, I will just say that Capitol, in the past, both members that are no longer on our committee, but also current members have been skeptical of leasing. We view it as a kicking the can down the road sort of topic for the, some of the, at least the two costs I see on, on the sheet. We're just pushing our problem out a couple of years, like, we are still paying, as an example, for a fire chief's vehicle that we bought five years ago, and it's almost at the end of its useful life. So I would think that the board, and I know Mr. Hamilton in particular has been thinking about policies and working through kind of the D R, D O R, D O R outcomes. I would think that if we are going to lease, we should be leasing consistently. If we are not going to lease, we should just not lease. Like, we need, we can't be like, every couple of years where we're trying to get the budget to a certain number. That's certainly my personal view, but it has been shared by Capitol over the years that we were plugging to get the Capitol budget to a certain number. So just, we need to be eyes wide open to the costs we are carrying into future years, because we're paying right now for leases from five years ago for assets that we certainly have the economic wherewithal to purchase outright, but we were trying to manage to a bottom-line number.
Okay, so we, we will discuss that one too, okay? But that's the list of what we intend to bring forth unless advisory convinces us otherwise. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so Jason, anything else you want to say as far as Capitol? All right, so you'll bring this back to Capitol, and we'll report back to us as far as...
What's our deadline?
We're going to meet, we really need to wrap this up next Tuesday night, because we're going to sign it the next Tuesday, so we got to have it ready to go the next Tuesday. We can't come in on the eighteenth and still be making changes.
Noted, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, as always, truly thank you.
Thank you. Take a cookie.
To Chelsea, take one to Chelsea.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Guyer, come on up. So as everyone knows, Carl has sponsored, we've only got one serious petition this time on the warrant, and that is being sponsored by Mr. Carl Guyer. And he will explain to us what he would like to accomplish.
Before I do that, right, I just want to...
So formally introduce yourself and where do you live, just so somebody...
Oh yeah, Carl Guyer, one forty-six Middle Road.
Okay.
In Southborough. Before, before we even get into this, listening to the Capitol budget, I just, I just want to pay a compliment to John Parent, because one of the things that I worked on advocating was the Green Communities Program, which you guys are familiar with, right? I think we've gotten over a million dollars from that program for a lot of capital improvements, right? And I think all the new streetlights came out of that, right, recently. No, was it not the new streetlights?
No, Grid paid for those.
Oh, okay.
We need to pay for those.
All right, so anyways, but it is a million dollars, right, that he's gotten, right? Because every year I have to write a little article, goes in my Southborough about how great it is.
Yeah, that is true, the amount of money, for sure.
So one of the things I was thinking is that, that's the problem, I'm sitting there thinking, right? Is that in the Capitol listing, right, because it is capital money that comes into the town, right? I mean, it's not up on your Capitol budget. As if, if you could recognize those in the Capitol budget, right? That way, the community knows that we are getting benefit out of the Green Communities Program, and that, and every year, I mean, it's like two-hundred thousand, two-hundred fifty thousand dollars we get every year. So if you could find a way of letting people know at town meeting that that's being supported that way, I would appreciate, I would appreciate that.
Good idea. Now let's get to Breckenham, because that wasn't on the agenda, so I gave you the...
I know, I know, I drifted off.
We're giving you, all can give you some else, talk to your article.
With, right? I've been thinking about this idea for a few months, right? And I probably, unfortunately, I ran it by Sam one time, I don't know if you remember this? He didn't, he was not too happy with it.
I do.
And the, the reason I, I'm opposing this is that, for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's like three and a half, four million dollars out the window for the town. I mean, that, it's almost unexplained why, why we have to wind up paying four million dollars for something that, that was created back in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighties, right? I think, and I only know a subset of what happened, right? Because I, it's kind of a joke, I, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work on this, right? It was, it's been quite an experience... It was, it's been quite an experience to try to push this through, right? I did a lot of things I think I probably, sometimes I think I shouldn't have done, but I did, right? So there's, there's a lot to be known about this. And I think town needs an explanation. Matter of fact, when I was thinking about this, I wrote it up and I put it aside on my desk and I said, ah, I don't know if this is a good idea, right? This may not be a good idea. So we sat there for a couple of weeks. And then one Saturday morning, in February, cold Saturday morning, I had nothing going on. I said, well, I think I'll go up to the transfer station and see if anybody agrees with this. I can get anybody to sign, right? The first five people I talked to signed it. I had 30 signatures in an hour, right? So there's a, there's, I think there's a considerable desire for, in the town to know, how did this come about? How did the town wind up having to spend three and a half to four million dollars on something that never should have happened, right? I mean, unless somebody else here agrees that this should have happened. It never should have happened, right?
Be more clear with what you just said. What shouldn't happen? We should never have gotten the land, or we shouldn't have done the cleanup? What is it?
We should, we have, we should have never been stuck with the dump.
Okay.
Right? When we purchased the land, you know, I, I don't know what happened back then. That's probably my, the segment that I, I have no, I, idea what happened. How we ever got that, right, wound up with that thing? Because it was, if you look on Google Earth, you can go back and you look at the site and it's plainly visible, right? How we ever got that? What was the deal? What went on, you know, and then why was never? I mean, there have been numerous meetings over the decades. It's been decades. Numerous meetings over the decades to deal with this. And every time, it's pretty much the same thing. The Conservation Commission just did it the other night. The only reason I know about that is I read the article that got written up in my Southborough about this. Is they said, well, you know, the guy's dead and we can't get any money out of it, so we can't do anything. That's pretty much been the, been the, the theme through this, right? So I, you know, why didn't people do anything? Why didn't people take action, you know? I mean, I, I saw this thing, I knew in five minutes, right? Because I was responsible for it, because I was on the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission is responsible for that land. You know, my response was right off the bat, oh my God. If I don't do anything, I could be in trouble. I mean, I was really acting in my own defense, pushing this thing, right? Because I don't want to get sued, right? So this is, this, I think an explanation is, is needed, right? And that's what this really is all about. We need an explanation, and it doesn't appear that we can explain it from within. There's no, there's no ability in, in within, because it gets, it gets too personal. So I think we need somebody from the outside to come, to come in and offer an explanation as to how this all happened, right? There's a possibility people did something wrong. There really is. I think there really is, based on what I've seen. And I can't explain to you because some of it's still, is still being, is still under wraps. I think some of those executive meeting notes are still under wraps from the, from the Conservation Committee back in 2005, 2006. I haven't checked on this recently. I tried to get them released. I had a big go around with the, with the town attorney and the Secretary of the State office, right? We went around like three times trying to get these things released and couldn't get them released, right? There's some interesting information in there. I can't divulge it because I think it's...
So you weren't on the Conservation Commission then, obviously you would know what was said.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could read them, because it was legal for me to read them at that time, yeah.
So in the end, it sounds like you're more concerned with what happened post-acquisition, which I think was 1980, than the actual, because you know, the select, selectmen back then that were in place, they're all dead. Sorry.
Right. And even to assume that they're, they're at fault. I've heard people say, well, it was the old, the selectmen from then, that they... No, that may not be true. I mean, you have to, you know, I would not, I would not use their names because I would be afraid of slandering them, right?
And of course, we didn't have Google Earth in 1980 either to be able to look at it. So your concern is more directed at the Conservation Commission as far as how they reacted once this issue was brought forth by you? Is that where you...
I'm not going to answer that question. Because that, 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 that is saying, I blame people on the Conservation Commission. I don't want to be the one to say, you're to blame, you're to blame, you're to blame. That's not, I'll get in trouble doing that. I have avoided that like the plague, right, doing that, this whole process. I mean, I've seen things I could have pointed at people saying, you, you, no, 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 I can't do that.
I'm just trying to understand what you think an investigation would accomplish if, you know, reports written and said, you know, this was not our finest moment, which is true. I think everybody agrees with that. We're talking about investigating, you know, people who have worked for the town and would be protected by the town legally, I assume, unless they've done something obviously wrong on purpose. So I just, I'm just having trouble understanding what the end game would be here besides spending money on a study. I, I don't know where we, I don't know what good it would do, Carl, is what I'm trying to say. I hope we've learned our lesson as far as what to do going forward with property that we are trying to acquire. But I don't know what going back and re, re opening this would actually accomplish.
I don't know if we've learned our lesson about dumps.
You what?
I don't think we've learned our lesson about dumps, right?
So you're talking about the Neary project now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. You know, you know, I, what can I say? I mean, if I were, if you were sitting in my shoes, if you just went through what I went through, to get this done, and then you hear, we're going to build a hundred, I, this is, I hoping, I was hoping not to talk about this tonight. But if you're going to build a hundred million dollar school next to the, I mean, that dump is in the NWRA watershed. We are required to monitor that thing till the end of time, right, in perpetuity, right?
All right, so I am going to cut you off here because...
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
So I hear you, but, you know, we've got plenty of other forums.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I, you know, you're kind of buried into that on, yeah. But what have we learned? I, I don't think we've learned a good enough lesson, right? And I think the, for the amount of money that's involved, number one, we need to explain to people how in a world, Southborough, sat on an illegal dump for decades, knowingly sat on. I mean, because there's, there's written documentation for this. How it could knowingly sit on the dump. What was motivating people to look the other way, right? We should motivate people to say, I mean, why didn't they recognize that I recognized right away? That this is, this is wrong, and you could be, you could be held liable for this, right? I don't know. I think, I think it would be a good, it would be a good, I mean, and it's only going to be a lesson. It's going to last for so many years. I know that. It'll, it'll, you know, it'll deteriorate after time. But anyways, that's, that's my position. I don't, I don't mean to take up all your time. Thank you.
Andrew. So I, I don't support this. I think it's a very bad idea for several reasons. One, we just had this discussion about the budget. So this is something you would add to the overall appropriation. Was it a hundred eighty, $65,000? So you think, so, I mean, I think you asked a good question. Is this to generate some type of a cost recovery? You know, it's like an upfront investment that pays for itself? Or is it to just kind of air a bunch of grievances and make a lot of people angry? So, I mean, I thought it was interesting and educational, the 19-year-old legal analysis memo that is in the packet, where it looks like the town was advised 19 years ago that there was a stat, the, there was a one-year statute of limitations against the Davis estate was about to run. Should the town do a phase two assessment or not? So the town, I guess, elected not to do it. So I mean, this is a decision that was had 19 years ago.
Yeah.
So I got to think there's, the statute of limitations bars any claim about that. It doesn't encourage people to volunteer on, on boards where the, you know, the town is active. Well, you could be sued 20 years later for something that you did. I'm familiar with something called the discretionary function exemption to the Massachusetts tort claims act, where, you know, pretty much any decision that a, a public official, that instead of it's just performing a duty in the ordinary course, you have to make a decision about how to allocate scarce resources and things like that. You have some level of immunity. So I think it's a bad idea. Don't support it.
Can I respond to that, Andrew?
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you blame the conservation for this. That's kind of...
I didn't say that.
A target of this, right?
I didn't say that.
But that's what you think.
You can assume what I think.
Okay.
One, one of the things that hap, that has happened about this is, is the Conservation Commission has been decimated by this. I mean, they don't have, used to have seven people. People used to like the joint conservation. They've got openings now.
Well, you're at the Capital Planning Committee, you've got two openings too.
What's that?
I don't, I don't draw any connection between the current vacancies on the...
When this, when this hit the fan, a bunch of us quit. And they haven't been able to, to bring, so if people think that, that volunteering for a board is going to stick them in a bad spot, that's not a good idea. Because that's what happened. I got stuck in a bad spot, right? Because of other people's actions behind me. They should have, they, they didn't do their job, and I got stuck having to deal with this. That's not good.
Okay. Sam?
As you know, I actually, I don't support this either, but two things. One, I think it's important to focus going forward as opposed to revisiting history. And hypothetically, if we come up with a study, for example, that says, you know, person A, person B, person C was, quotes, responsible for this somehow. If, if these people, which is, I think likely the case, were town volunteers, employees, or whatever, then what do you do? You sue them. The town is actually going to protect them. And so we basically are suing ourselves, which is sort of silly. And so the only other thing there is, you know, you, you get some sort of anger of, you, you misbehave, so we're going to hold you accountable and hold you up for ridicule or whatever here. That's not very satisfying in many ways, I think. So I think that's a fool's errand, frankly.
Can I respond to you, Sam?
You're going to respond to each one of us, Carl?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, you know. Holding people up, making people responsible for what they do is not a bad idea. I mean, that's all I'm going to say, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, if people do something wrong, they do something wrong, right? And there probably should be, I mean, if it's really wrong, people all make, make mistakes, right? Lots of mistakes, right? And, and I know in this case, there's, there's a whole range of errors that were, some were little, some were big, right? You know, the little ones, nobody's going to do anything about that. But the big ones, I think we should. I mean, I think there were some really big errors made in this, right? So, you know, that's why you want somebody to go off and look at this on the side, the side. Were there any, you know, there were a lot of little errors made. We're not going to deal with those. We're going to deal with the big ones, right?
I guess, I just don't see any useful recourse regardless of how this study might come out, so.
Well, we have a police department for that same reason, right?
They're going to put somebody in jail because they made a bad...
No, 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 no. We, no, 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 that's not what I meant. What I'm meaning is, we enforce, you know, when, we do enforcement when things go wrong, right? I mean, we have to.
But the things that went wrong here happened years ago now, so.
Yeah, some of them were years ago, yeah.
Again, I just don't see any real value from...
That's fine, okay. I didn't expect it to be, I know this is...
Let's get, we've got two more people here to go.
Okay, go ahead.
Marguerite?
Carl, two things occurred to me. I thought when the Brickneck Hill property was purchased, it was so that it wouldn't become a lot of houses, right? Couldn't the Davises have sold it to develop it for houses? And didn't we feel it was a great coup to get it as open space? Wasn't that the whole...
I don't know.
It was a...
I mean, it could, it could...
Marguerite, he was behind with his taxes, so...
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Right, but I mean, a developer can pay the taxes off and buy the whole thing, right?
And we got the whole property for $225,000 in the eighties, which was a great deal, because I bought a house.
So you just add in the three and a half million to that, and that's what it all really cost, I think.
I would, I...
If you know what I mean.
Which is not a bad price.
No, which is not a bad deal.
Ninety acres.
The other, the other...
If somebody, if, if, if somebody steals the car out of your driveway.
I know.
It's, that's not, you don't add that to the value of your house.
I know. Well, I look at it as, thank goodness it's not 100,000 houses, right? It's beautiful, open space, okay? And the other part of it...
Well, I have a house in Southborough. I hope you don't want me out of town, right?
No, no, but you know what I mean. We, we love the open space. There it's beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, the open space is wonderful.
The other, the other part of it is, I think that there's probably not a town in, in all of New England and Pennsylvania and New York and anywhere else that doesn't have this exact same problem, which is these hidden pockets of stuff left over from 100 years.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's lots of hidden pockets of old dumps, right? But this one's exceptional, right? It was on conservation land. It's on the side of the hill, next to a stream, flowing into a reservoir for a large metropolitan district. The, the downside to this could have been huge.
But it wasn't.
Luckily, luck.
Right. But anyway, that's...
It was damn good luck on our part, right? And we didn't know that, right, until we cleaned it up.
Well, I think it was worth it even with the dump to get that big...
That's fine.
That's just my thing. But I appreciate, totally appreciate where you're coming from.
Al?
Couple of items. I actually have some sympathy for Mr. Guyer and, and his position. So I think the first thing to remember is, you know, that we acquired this in, I think it was 1980. So, you know, we, we should not think about whatever monies we paid in 2024 terms. I mean, I bought a very nice house in 1980 for $45,000. So, you know, that was a lot of money at the time.
No, I mean...
But, no, but... The more I'm, having been in this position now for two years, one of the things I've come to realize is that this board's and next board, and the board after that, and the board after that is going to be responsible for cleaning up the messes that prior boards left and prior residents left. I grew up working on farms, and there isn't a farm that I wasn't on, that I was on that didn't have a dump. They all had dumps because people didn't used to have garbage collection. And the stuff that went into the dump wasn't nice, you know? My dad grew up on a, worked on a farm, you know, where they, they dealt with the potato beetles using something called Paris green, which was arsenic. And, you know, what didn't go on there went into the dump. And so, you know, we, I think the big lesson that I take out of this is when we find a problem, you just got to fix it, you know? There, there are things which you get a choice about and there are things you don't. And, and you just have to kind of bite the bullet and fix it. You know, we got one right now in terms of the Atwood water tank. Where, you know, in the next year or so, we're going to have to bite the bullet for a million, million and a half dollars to clean that up, some, some number like that. And we're going to find more of them because Europeans have lived in Southborough for over 300 years. And we leave messes. And the Native Americans also left their own messes. And I struggled, Carl, with, with spending the money. Because I don't like to spend money. And, but I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the message that you're delivering here, which is, you know, we have these little time bombs. And we're going to have to deal with them, and we need to deal with them responsibly. And we need to deal with them promptly. That's the big message that I take out of here. You know, this, this, you know, this attitude that I don't want to know is wrong. And this attitude that, you know, I can't deal with it this year is also wrong. And that's from a guy who doesn't like to spend money.
So Al, one thing I'd like to respond to, you mentioned, you, you said the magic words, farm dump, right? I don't know if you saw a little comment I made in my Southborough. There was a, there was an article about, there was a person who came to the library who talked about magical thinking. And it was, it's not delusional thinking, it's convincing yourself things are different from what they really are, right? And even now, I mean, I, I was picking on the notes from the Conservation Commission because they, they're still using the term farm dump. That was not, that was not a farm dump, right? A lot of the stuff came out of, the gentleman who owned it had this trucking repair business. A lot of the stuff came out of, the gentleman who owned it had this trucking repair business right down the end of my street, Middle Road. I did, I never knew him, right? I, I don't know who the person is. I know his name. And a lot of the stuff that came from there was up in the dump. This was not just farm stump.
Oh, let me be clear about this, because I, I've seen a lot of farm dumps.
Yeah.
The term farm dump, you know, the farmer had a buddy, and a lot of these guys, you know, would do construction work on the side. And so, you know, construction scamps went in there, and, you know, yeah, the farm dump is not just farm stuff. This was a typical farm dump.
Right.
You know, you know, 20 bucks you can, you know--
The location is a farm dump. The car, the location--
Location is a farm.
It was, it was, it's a dump on a farm.
Yeah, but farm, farm dump is like, it's, it's like organic. You know, people, you, 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 it's an organic dump, you know? Not, not at all, not at all.
All right, so let me--
Thank, thank you, everybody.
Well, let me close this out. So I have total sympathy for your feelings toward this. I do too. The fact that we spent, I mean, we could have used that $3.6 million in so many ways to do so much, but it is what it is. But I will say this, I, you know, it's not that hard to get signatures at the transfer station, you know, most people will sign. So I'm not, I wouldn't put a lot of credence in that, but the two times this came in front of town meeting, there was hardly a word said about it from the town meeting. The second one, it just went flying past.
Did you read my little summary?
What's that?
Did you read the little summary I sent you?
Yes.
About how people were stunned in silence about this? I mean, there was--
Well, okay, but they didn't say anything, and it passed really quick.
Well, I know, I know.
And I don't remember you standing up and saying anything either, because I know where you were sitting, so you didn't say anything either.
Matter of fact, I was going to say something. I was going to bring this up, but somebody here, my volunteer, asked me not to say anything because it would jeopardize passage of the thing, right? Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, and I agreed. I said, fine, we got to get this thing passed. Because I don't want to, I don't want to be a, you know, you know, screw up the works here. Because we got to get this thing passed, because the state will be bringing it down our neck, right? Yeah, and the only person who ever said any, asked any question was somebody I knew, and I was talking to him, and he got up and he asked a very specific question. And the answer got, was, 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 was a good answer. But I, you, I mean, people were stunned. I mean, I, I don't, I can't describe it other than that. I mean, Sam made the presentation the first time. He didn't even get any questions, right? Nobody even questioned it. I mean, it was like, oh, my God.
That's my point. Okay, so Carl, I think you can read the room pretty well. So I don't think there's going to be support, Donald, what advisory is going to do, but I don't think there's going to be support from the Select Board for this article. Doesn't mean town meeting won't. All we do is put our opinion on there, and then town meeting votes. So you'll have a chance to make your case at town meeting.
Yep.
If it passes, the Select Board still has the ability not to spend the money, and so it doesn't mean it would happen anyway, just so you know.
I know, I wrote it.
Go ahead.
I know that, yeah.
And we'll see what advisory says. We're meeting with them next Tuesday. We'll see what their opinion is, and then each group will, will vote.
Yeah, I purposely, I mean, because I, I trust you guys, right? I purposely, I, I could have left that out of the thing, right? I, I purposely left it in, because I just copied it out of an old, you know, an old warrant, my article. And I read that, and I said, okay, you know, the Select Board will, will have a lot of leverage with this, right? And they can do what they want, right? So I, I did that on purpose, so, because I trust you. Thank you.
But thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for your time.
I know where your heart is, so thank you for coming.
Yeah, as, as they say in Monty Python, you know, something completely different.
You're great, you're great. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think anybody's got a report except for you, Mark.
Are we going to vote on this?
We're going to vote them all. We've got a whole list, and that's one of them we're going to vote on. Okay, so we are going to vote shortly. We've got like 23 articles we're going to vote on. That's one. Okay. All right, Mark?
So just quickly, I just did my, I did my personal privilege thing with Mr. Malinowski earlier while he was here. This is just another plug for the Meals on Wheels program. They are seeking drivers. You know, this is a, you know, an important program. You know, meals are provided, home-delivered to senior citizens age 60 or over. And they are having issues getting enough people to drive, to provide, you know, to bring the meals to the homes. So if you, you know, would like to sign up as a volunteer, they're always looking for people. Springwell is the, I'm just looking at the information I have, is the, is the, is the company that provides the volunteers. You can sign up. You can go to the website, www.springwell.com. Or you can call them at 617-926-4100 to, to sign up and, and help participate in this very valuable program. So just wanted to put that out there for the, for the senior center.
And when you sign up, you could specify you want to drive in Southborough?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else before we move on?
I got a couple of quick ones.
Go ahead, Al.
So I met with John Parent regarding the public safety light situation, where, you know, the vendor of the lighting control system is now apparently going belly up. And he's trying to buy as much inventory as he can, but I think we have a potential $200,000 risk going forward if we can't buy or secure some components at, at some point. So that, that's one. And then the second thing is, I met with Jason and Brian to begin the process of working up a 15-year debt forecast. And then the intent is to essentially take the list of all of the things that people think we would want and try and sequence them over the next 15 years. And then compare that with the, at least, proposed debt policy terms, both in terms of total debt as a percentage of equalized value and debt service as a percentage of the town's total revenue. The thing that pops up to me very, very quickly, even without the, the Neri School, is that, you know, our debt service today is relatively modest. And over the next 15 years, our debt service is going to grow substantially as a percentage of our budget. Regardless of what, what we do about Neri, we have, we've kicked a lot of cans down the road, and the chickens are coming home to roost and pick a couple of aphorisms. So those are the two things that I have to report.
And where we left off with implementing the recommendations, we got about, you know, not quite half of them, so you're going to come back at some point with the, besides that one? The rest of them?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we, we got through about half of them. This, this seemed to be the most pressing one in terms of, of, the intent here is, is to give the, the citizens and the taxpayers and town meeting members, you know, a complete picture of the claims on our debt, debt capacity that we might consider. So, you know, essentially letting people pick and choose, you know, where they think their priorities are.
Okay. All right, consent agenda. We have A, B, C, and D. E, we don't have any minutes this time because we met so recently. So anybody want to hold A? You're happy with the changes, Al? Okay. B is this donation. C is, we know, we approve that, right? So we're ready to go there. Al and Sam have some very good candidates for the wastewater study committee. We're okay with those. We, we know them all. And then Kelly O'Brien has stepped up to be on the taxation A committee, which is nice. So they look, they all look good. Okay, so Andrew, you make a motion?
I move that we approve all the consent agenda items.
Second.
Al in favor? All right, budget. Okay, so everyone should have in front of you the most recent Excel workbook that we call RevCap. It's hot off the press from today. A couple more changes got made to it. If you've got the right one, it's going to reflect a projected 7.86% year-over-year to the average house. Does everybody have that one?
Yeah.
Very first page?
First page.
Yeah. So Vanessa, can you bring Brian over? Everybody have it? Okay. All right, so we're going to do, we already talked about capital. Everybody seemed to be happy with where that ended up. So now let's talk about the R parting budgets. So Brian, I'll start off this and then turn it over to you. I hope you said okay to that.
Brian's in the audience. There he is, comes down on the panel.
So he's there now?
Yep.
All right, so Brian, I'll just kind of tee this up, and then I'll turn it over to you.
Still muted, Brian.
Brian is a man of few words. Okay. All right, so if you go to page two, that might be the better place to start here, which has all the individual budgets. So you'll notice toward the right, Brian's made some editorial edits or comments that are reflected in the actual request for '26. So let's start with police and fire. So when we met last week with the two chiefs, we all agreed, at least at that meeting, to add the deputy fire chief and to add the overtime that Chief Putini requested, except for $50,000, and also except for what it would cost to bring on the deputy as of July 1st instead of January 1st, which is what we agreed to on February 8th. So I assume that everybody's still okay with that? No one's changed their mind? Okay. All right. Al?
I don't think we actually voted, but I'm struggling with, with these two, because, you know--
We haven't voted yet. In fact, we're not going to vote until next week with advisory. So we're just trying to see where we stand tonight, so we can say to advisory, this is where we are.
Yeah.
And then we'll actually vote to see where each group is next Tuesday.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so you're struggling with fire?
Both police and, and fire. You know, I'm, I am reluctant to add municipal headcount this year. And if we can't find other places in the budget, I, I'm struggling with that. I spent several hours this morning going over police logs, for example, to try and triangulate, you know, the, the chief's concern about having multiple officers on multiple calls.
So stick on fire first, then we're going to talk about police. So fire is, he wants a deputy chief that we've had on the table for as long as I can remember. And then he wants enough overtime to make sure he can maintain five people on each shift.
I, I understand what he's asking.
Okay, so do what--
If we can't find a headcount reduction someplace else, I'm just not going to support increases in, in headcount. You know, we have had a steady drumbeat of increases in municipal employees. And we had, we don't, we are not seeing an increase in our population. It is changing a bit. But I can't ask a senior citizen for an 8% tax increase this year. I just can't. You know, you know, other people, I'm probably, it's probably going to be four to one, but I'm--
It's okay. I mean, I've been on the one, I've been on one several times with the four. Okay, so does anybody else agree with Al? Are we, are the other four supporting the fire department? Sam?
I support the fire. Al, I'm certainly sympathetic to the point. I think there are some things that we actually have to do. Public safety, for me, is one of them. I think there's a good argument for both of these, so.
Yeah. My feeling is that, you know, there's another department we never look at, which is the, everybody else. And it adds up to $6.4 million, which is essentially the same size as our public safety department. And we, you know, it's because they're all sprinkled through little things. If, we can't, I mean, you know, Eric Sandberg said it at, at the meeting, you know, we have an unsustainable system. And we've got to start dealing with it. But, yeah, we proceed.
Which, again, I think we're trying to do with the wastewater thing. That, to me, is the--
Yeah, that's--
That's not going to happen near term, certainly.
No.
Which is what we're also trying to do with expanding the commercial tax base, if we could get something significantly done there too. That's another way to at least take the burden off--
I, I agree.
I don't have an answer to if we're not going to cut someplace else, just so you know. The schools have gone back and re-scrupled it, which I will tell you about in a second. And there's not much there. They came up with a little bit with Algonquin, but not, not much.
No, they're, they're, the schools are beyond, you know, our, our, our authority. This is about--
Well, the, the overall budget's not beyond our authority. The individual line items are. We could absolutely reduce the school budget here, and they'd have to go back and figure out where to put it. We can't tell them what to do with it, but we could certainly reduce it. Okay, so it looks like that's a 4-1 vote when we do vote. Police department, okay, now let's talk about police. So what you see now is what I had suggested last Tuesday, which is reduce the four that we agreed on, February 8th, to three by starting October 1st, and January 1st, and April 1st. Which means next year they'll be in full time. We've added three new full-time positions. So that's the impact of this. You won't fill it until the next year completely, but it still adds a lot here. This is on top of the impact of the new collective bargaining agreement. And on top of the police chief's new salary, on top of other things going. So this is a big increase here. So Andrew, what do you think about, what are you, what's your thinking right now as far as the police department increase?
I mean, I'm also struggling with this in the same way Al has, but ultimately, in terms of where we landed, I think it's, it's reasonable.
Okay, Sam?
Has it, has, have you talked to the chief about this one again?
No. When we left last time, chief did not move a bit. He wanted the four that we agreed on. And so this is a deviation from where we were on February 8th. This has taken one away.
Yeah, yeah. I'm okay with this.
Marguerite?
I am too. I support what, I actually support the number of people that chief wants.
Oh, he wants more.
Which is not this.
Okay, he wants more than this. Al?
So as, as I said, you know, I spent a few hours today looking at police logs. And, and I don't mean this in any sense as a criticism of our chief. We, what I think is, I think we've got a very good chief. And we have a strong chief by law, which means that, you know, he basically calls the shots and the priorities for the police. And two things stood out to me.
Fire chief.
Fire chief is stronger than police chief, but whatever.
No, so, so it's a--
Not the police chief.
And two things stood out to me. One, and again, this is a partial analysis, and I could easily be corrected. So one of the things that the chief expressed concerns about was when he, you know, incidences that required multiple officers. And so I went through, through, through February's log. And it looks like those average about 2.5 incidences a day. So, and then, you know, they're, they're on the order of an hour. So, and the other thing that really strikes me is that we spend a lot of our police resources on traffic. And that's a policy decision, that, you know, that if we're, if we're spending time on traffic patrols, we are not necessarily spending time on other areas that where, that, and. So I, I think that's a policy decision, and maybe we ought to have a more, more fulsome discussion on that. But, you know, if you can, if we can find, I, I'm, I want to keep headcount constant on the municipal side of government this year. I think that should be our goal. This does not achieve that goal. And I, I'm, I got my feet dug in here, and I, I'm not trying to cause a wedge issue with, with either chief. But population isn't growing. We're not getting a lot more services, so, you know.
Can I just, Al, in terms of the, of the number of incidents, as chief said, you can have an average number, but they don't always occur that way. You could get three on a Saturday night and nothing all day Sunday. So you, if, you don't know when you're going to be under manned, and it could be--
So yes, and then that is, that is kind of, you know, my take on, this is now risk assessment. And so the, the standard deviation of that was about two. The worst ca, worst day was seven. Now, just, just for, you know, the one period in, in February that I looked at. And, you know, there were also days with zeros. And now, you know, so I, I categorize them as, you know, there was an arrest, there was an accident, suspicious activity. And there were one or two other things. And I, it's still a partial analysis, but there's, that's kind of where I am right now.
And I think public safety is a little different in the sense the world, the population is not growing, certainly. But the world is a more complicated place each year, more-- More, you know, transient, going through town, potential for, you know, other criminal kind of things going on from the traffic that goes through, et cetera. So I think that what the chief is seeing is some of that sort of overall society pressure on the system, which to me is a real risk for the public if we're not ready to respond. But I agree with you.
I'll sit down with the chief again, you know, I give him, take another shot at convincing me, but, you know, I just, I just did this analysis this morning and started looking at it. You know, I like to dig into the numbers and...
Again, that's a reasonable thing to do. Reasonable people can have different views of things.
Yeah. Don't call me reasonable, please.
Occasionally.
No, you're totally reasonable. My take on it is, I, between what Chief Nils said on February 8th that we all heard, what he said last week, I, you know, I'm not a policeman, I'm not a police chief. I just put a lot of stock in what he said. I mean, I think it was a sincere request. He's not getting, you know, the full six. Now, remember, too, this, the study didn't say put all six in in one year. It said, I think, 2, 2, 2 staggered him, right? And he asked for all six, so he's getting three. He's got four vacancies right now. We think he's going to have trouble probably, you know, getting the four before July 1st. He disagrees, so that's fine. But I do think the world has gotten so more complicated for a variety of reasons. I told you, I went to the police chief in my little hometown, and based on what they said, what they have, I mean, they've got many more policemen than we do, they've got a sheriff's department to back up that, the police department, and they've got a school resource officer at every single school all day long. Was anybody around last Friday when the Pike shut down and saw what it did to Southborough? So I, you know, I'm looking out at my, from my office window, and I can see it, and I thought, oh, my gosh, the police are probably truly on high alert with what, I mean, there were, you know, transfer trucks just lined up on Route 9 trying to go through. So you never know what's going to happen in a day, right? Who would have thought the Pike would have opened up and sucked people in? So anyway, I just, I, I'm with you, Al. I am as much of a fiscal hawk as you are. I just don't have, I just think we need this. I think, I think the town probably will support this, if I had to guess. I don't know for sure. I think there'll be some pushback on this one because it's such a large increase, but I just have, I'm going to support the three. I'm not going to support the four, but I'm going to support the three for now, unless somebody changes my mind. Okay? All right, so anything else you want to say on this one?
Um, no.
All right. So we'll do the hands, it's the end of, let's get through our discussion first. Okay, the next one is the benefits budget. So the team of Mark, Brian, et cetera, have been working hard to get that down. The initial proposal from Harvard Pilgrim was a 24-point something year-over-year increase, 24.9, so call it 25% increase year-over-year because we had such a bad experience, all three districts last year, with large claims. So at this point, they've gotten that down to about 19, and they have been told to, our council's been told to go back to the drawing board and get it down to 17. And so 17 is what's in, what we're looking at right now. So we're assuming that they're going to get it down a couple more percent. The numbers look a little weird between the town and schools, only because of headcount. So the percentage is going up per policy. It's just you've got people coming out of the plan for the town side that aren't coming out of the plan for the school side. So it is a 17%, year-over-year increase in the premiums that we pay for the same population. Mark, Brian, you want to say anything else to amplify what I just said as far as where we hope we're going to end up?
No, I think, I think that covers it. You know, we are seeing, and again, we're not alone in this. Prescription costs are, and are really driving, you know, driving this train. Most communities are somewhere in the, you know, 16% to 19% increase this year. It's, it's just the barrel that we're in. And unfortunately for a community that has seen increases, annual increases south of five, except for once in the last decade, this is, this is the shock. So this has really been, been harder for us. Other communities in the consortiums that they're in, you know, they see, they see 10, 12, you know, percent increases each year, and something like this isn't going to make them flinch as much.
So we agree, we're going to try to restructure this in a way and look at all alternatives between now and the time we actually sign up, right?
Yes.
Okay, bigger plans, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, but what we're hoping, at least for now, town meeting that we're going to end up with 17 in this number, and that's what's in front of you, is 17%.
Okay. The, a real issue, too, in addition to our claims, is the, the big insurers are getting hammered by these weight loss drugs, Ozempic. I mean, those are, they're killing them, that's very expensive stuff. Zillions of people are using that, so it's going to take time for the system to adjust to that, but that's basically a new shock that everybody's dealing with, unfortunately. So we're sort of stuck, I think.
I'm just a little confused because you're referring to a 17% number, and I'm not seeing that one.
You're not going to, because in that budget number, there's more things besides health care, right? So benefits includes more than health care.
Okay, I understand.
So you'd have to separate out the health care, understand how that worked, understand how many people stayed in and came out. So on the town side, we actually took people out. So there, you'd have to really dig down to understand that, but just year-over-year, apples to apples, the increase is, was 24.9, is now 19, and we're trying to get it down to 17.
I mean, and that's, again, is there a great logic to it? No, not necessarily, but in light of that information, I think that's one of the reasons why I'm more comfortable with the three on the police department rather than the four.
Yeah, because they're going to get benefits, too, so. And so Brian has got that built in, the three instead of the four, into his benefits budget. So let's give Brian a chance to weigh in here. Brian?
No, I think you said it all, and, you know, I, it's going to narrow in the next week or two, so...
Brian, you're going to have to start all over because you're very muted.
Get close to the mic or turn up the volume.
We'll be updating in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Can hear you now, thanks.
Okay. All right, so I don't know what to say about this one. You know, there's not much that we can do other than hope that they are able to negotiate a better rate. And then going forward, maybe use a little bit more creativity, get a bigger group, where the risk can be spread, et cetera. But it sounds like everybody's in the same boat, for the most part, so I'm not sure even that would help. Right?
Yeah, we have had discussions with some of our other boroughs, neighbors, West Borough, potentially reaching back out to other communities a little further west, possibly Shrewsbury, taking a look at whether we can put together our own consortium. So expand on the three that we have and try to get some of that economy to scale up a little bit.
But everybody's in the same time bind at this point, right?
Every, yeah, I mean, you know, that's the only thing. Everybody's in the same, everyone's in the same boat right now. I mean, we're not seeing huge deviations off of that 15, 16, 19% range.
And everybody's got to do something for a town meeting coming up in the next month or two, too, so.
Yep.
We're sort of, again, in a box.
So misery loves company. The schools have not voted their respective budgets, K through 8 nor Elgonquin. I think they're close, so there's still a chance that they will find something else that they can reduce, but I don't think that they necessarily think that. I think they think they have dug pretty hard, and we heard that from them on that Saturday. So I don't think there's much hope that they're going to come back with anything that is significant.
Did they care about transportation? Did they get the...
I can't believe I didn't ask that. Do you know?
They were supposed to open bids last Friday.
I can't believe, we don't know that answer to that question. So, good question, Sam, and I can't believe we forgot to ask them. So they're supposed to have heard last Wednesday.
Yeah, last week.
And I would have thought that we would have heard if something crazy had happened. Or good news or bad news, right? I mean, 45% is built into this, I know that, so I guess it came in like they thought, and we would have heard something. So if anybody from the school committee is listening to us, let us know. All right, so we've covered now the big things that are driving this budget increase: capital, benefits, and public safety, as far as the operation budget. So we can talk about other things if we want to. Al, we have cut the select boards stipend down to zero, as you requested. So we have done that as a matter of principle, not that it made much difference. The only other new hours in here are...
I would encourage other elected boards to lead by example.
Okay. Well, school committee could give us $500, for example.
Yeah, we'll take it.
They get $100 each. All right, so the only other new hours in here were the increase to Laura Davis's hours to 40, so she can do something with conservation and more with ZBA. The other requested hours that are not in here are hours that the senior senator has asked to fill out the fiscal year for Heidi Sibelli with the new position that was created last year with the, with the donation they got. It wasn't a grant, it was a donation. So the plan is that they're going, the senior senator is going to ask for another donation, but they won't ask until September, so they don't, won't know before April 7th. So when we talked to advisory, and I've already brought this up with Andrew Faff, we can ask them if they'd be willing to look at this as a reserve fund transfer if they were not to get the donation in the fall that they want to keep Heidi's job through 6:30-26. So those hours aren't in there yet, but they, that could be the fallback plan for that.
How much money was that?
$12,000 or so. That's not a lot. $12,445. I mean, that one doesn't move the needle. I'm happy to put that in there just to get it in there, but if...
Did you talk to Kevin Miller about the historic commission?
We did. And put that back in there based on the fact that, who was the one that was talking about their budget? So they used to have a budget that looked like this, and then we just whacked it one year down to $1,000.
We had a discussion about it the last...
Yeah, that's why he came in, that's why he did this. So, yeah.
I would encourage you to speak with him again.
Well, go ahead, Al. Don't, don't sit there and grin about...
No.
He's going to change his mind?
He might.
Okay. Again, not going to help us very much, but you can talk to him.
Every little bit helps.
Well, that's a pretty little bit. It really doesn't help, I don't think. I know, you know, truly, I don't, I think he's still, it might be 7.85 instead of 7.86, but, you know, if that makes you think differently, I don't think it does. But, okay, we'll talk to him. All right, that's all I know about the budget as far as things that we could talk about, so I'm open to suggestions.
I don't see anything else.
I also don't see anything else. I mean, we're, this is now, we're at fourth or so meeting about this topic, so the number of new issues just declines. Every issue is just something we've already talked about.
Yeah, and we've got, you know, we've now got a levy balance of about $1,303,000. We started with a override, so we've gotten rid of the override by a lot. The year-over increase was twice this, so we've brought it down by half. The actual budget increase is probably 7.1 or so. The 7.86 reflects the value shift of 2.5%. So we do have a value shift built into this. So the actual budget increase, if we had no value shift, would probably be 7.1% or so. So we're done?
Yep.
All right, we're not going to vote until next Tuesday with advisory, see what they say, so we can try to come up with a unified approach to town meeting. Okay, who, who is it? All right, so you can bring her over.
Thank you. Kathy, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I just, I want to back up quickly to the discussion on the school budget. I just have one statement and then one request. So first, I want to thank the select board for your majority support so far. Can't think of anything more important than our public safety and our fire and police department's safety. Mr. Hamilton, with a sincere respect for the efforts you put into all matters before you and the time you put in, when the select board opts to do back-of-the-envelope analysis to question experts without hard numbers and facts, I think it's misleading and it's confusing to the public. And this has happened in the past when assessing things like the condition of certain properties, for example, that sometimes those back-of-the-envelope calculations don't end up being factually correct. And if you, also, if you look online on our, you know, community site, which is a good temperature read for the, for what's happening or what the sentiment is in town, our police are unnecessarily, in my opinion, beat up at times for not doing enough traffic patrolling. I think just this past weekend or week, there was a long, you know, a long dialogue about it. Speed is a huge concern for those in town, to the point that they're worried about loss of life. So I agree with you that it's really difficult to face this tax increase, not just for seniors, as you mentioned, but single families, low-income families, low-to-middle income individuals and families, I mean, really, a lot of us in town. So I'm going to be eager to see how you feel about, when the time comes, when, how you feel about the nearest school building, and whether you personally put that above public safety. And I know you, I don't believe you've stayed a position, so I'm, you know, I'm not asking for that. Now onto my request, or the select board just to consider amongst yourselves. If in the future, if part of discussion's going to contradict analysis performed by our professionals, that it should either be done by professionals or with a more thorough data analysis that's actually presented during the meeting, people very much present, respect you and your opinions as they should, but then that needs to be handled delicately when presenting facts versus theories, so as not to mislead the public. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to go through the warrant itself, and this is where we got, we can do a whole lot of votes tonight, and then hopefully we can do the rest of them next Tuesday night at either the 6:30 or the 7:45 meeting. Okay, so everybody have the draft? If you look at the table contents, we're just going to go through it real quick, and then you got the warrant to look at to make sure...
Sure. I might, I'm going to ask a question, which is maybe anticipating something which is going to come up in the course of... Do you know if the moderator has started to put together a draft consent list?
He has not.
He has not, no. And this, I was just having this conversation with Mr. Ballantyne earlier today. This warrant is a lot more, I guess I would say, fluid at this point than it, than it should be. So to try and provide something to him at this point, I'm just trying to wait until we get a little bit, a little bit better, and I think after tonight, he can have this. Town council does have this, so he is taking a look. Again, a lot of the language is already pretty good, but there are some things that we still do need his input on, so...
So Mark and I went through each one of these, and in each case, the ones that we have agreed, we could, we could vote on tonight if we choose to, the language is pretty well set. Agree? Okay. Okay, so let's start from the top. So we've got 39 potential articles. So the first three are routine ones that we have on every warrant to accept money from donors, to allow us to borrow, and to allow us to execute contracts that are in excess of three years if it is beneficial to do so up to seven years. Is the seven in there this time?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any problem with those three? Okay, so Andrew, you want to do all the motions, and Sam, you do the second, if you have to do with this?
Okay. Let's see if I get the first one right.
All right.
I move that the select board, what word should I use? Support. Articles 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
All in favor? So 504, 1, 2, and 3. Okay, the next group, so if you go to the next page, the next group we think we can look at are 8 and 9. 8 is the annual $250,000 appropriation to the OPEP trust fund to help us try to get that fully funded. And then, Carl will like this one. The next one is to rescind the unused but authorized debt for Breakneck Hill Farm cleanup and that $600,000 and change. So it's done, and so it ended up costing us, let's see, two, about $3.6 million.
I'm generally fine with these, but I do have a question about it. I don't understand 8 versus 36.
We'll explain when we get to it. We've just been told to re, we reauthorize it because of municipal...
Yeah, can I answer the question now if you'd like? So Article 8 is our regular transfer into...
Yeah, right.
To the trust fund.
But we already have a trust fund.
We do. And Article...
36.
36.
Authorizes a trust fund.
Department of Revenue came out this year and said with the, with the Municipal Modernization Act, they changed the MGL a little, just a little bit.
Oh, okay.
It's...
So we got to reauthorize it.
Council has said it doesn't appear to have a whole lot of significance, but they're suggesting that if you approved it before 2016, which we did...
Yeah, okay.
That we should just simply be reauthorizing it. So yes, it, I understand it looks a little quirky, but that's really the explanation.
Got it, thank you.
That's only for this year, and then it's done?
And then, yeah, and then we're...
Till they change it again.
Until, until somebody changes something else, and then we have to redo it again.
All right, so now that we've talked about that one, let's do those three then. Okay, so we've got 8, 9, and 36. Andrew?
I move that the board support Articles eight, nine, and thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the next two would be the pay and classification study that Jason referred to tonight, the $25,000, and then the authority to tap into the MWRA borrowing program, the zero percent interest program, up to a million and a half dollars that would be used for the Lindbrook Road water main replacement.
I move that the select board approve, not approve, sorry, support Articles eleven and twelve.
Second.
All in favor? Anybody have some questions, just speak up. I'm, we pick things that we think are, are easy. Okay, the next one is fifteen. Fifteen is basically authorizing the lease payments for leases previously approved in prior years, not this year, but previously approved.
I move that the board support Article fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Just out of curiosity, do we actually have to do that?
Make lease payments on leases you're, previously executed?
It's a.
Oh, you're saying, do we have to actually approve it, given we've got a lease signed?
Yeah.
It does seem to be a little redundant, right? I mean, what are we gonna do?
It's really no different than, it is a form of debt.
Yeah, so, good point.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer. We've been doing it.
No, towns can, states can choose not to pay. It's just, the consequence of that is, should show up in your.
Substantial.
Good your credit rating, where you choose to default on low payments.
We can choose not to pay our debts, too.
Yeah, it's a bad decision. So then by doing this exercise, we are affirming we are credit-worthy people, so that's why, yes, it has to be here, and we're doing it. But it's probably something that should be on a consent agenda at town meeting.
Definitely. Okay, sixteen is to authorize, as in annual, we authorize funds to come out of the 9/11 field revolving fund that collects fees for using the field to make the bond payment that was for debt that was borrowed to redo the field.
Yep.
Okay.
Andrew?
I move that the board support Article sixteen.
Second.
All in favor? All right, the next one is the hiring consultants. That is, what are we adding, $10,000, I think, to this one?
I thought it was reduced.
Yes, we're trying to, we're trying to keep it right around $30,000. So we'd only have to add $10,000 this year with what's been spent.
All right, so the money being added is $10,000. Okay?
Okay, so what have we spent it on so far this year?
Mark, just a little spot there.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and take a look unless Brian's gonna help me out.
Apparently not.
You're on your own.
Yeah, so good to have him, isn't it? Yes, I'll have, I'll have to let, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, so, but we are adding ten to it. That, that's true. I just looked to make sure.
Okay, well, just asking the question made me think, should we do that? Should we get the information, what were we used to before?
All right, so you wanna wait?
Yeah, let's.
Okay, we can wait, we can wait.
Yeah.
All right, the next one is the annual insurance deductible. I've always thought this one was a little silly, no offense to anybody.
It is, too, yeah.
But that's what we do every year, so the deductible is, I think it's $10,000 per incident. And so we're adding, what, ten to it? Twenty?
Yes.
Twenty or ten? I think twenty.
We're adding twenty.
Yeah, so we're basically trying to cover two incidents.
I thought we agreed to reduce that to ten and rely on the reserve fund for the difference.
We talked about it. I don't remember what we agreed to, so.
I don't know.
Okay, so we could do it. Again, not gonna change much, but it's, every little bit helps. So if you wanna do that, we could do that.
How many incidents have we had annually, historically?
What's the standard deviation?
Yeah.
So Brian, what do we usually have as far as number of incidents? Any idea? I think Brian's asleep.
Oh, yeah.
All right, sorry.
No, but we did have more incidents this year. I just note, in general, than we usually do. So I think Carla was big on trying to give a little bit more money into this.
What'd he just say?
Carla wanted more.
Having more money in.
Carla wanted, Carla.
Oh, Carla, I thought you said Carl.
Yeah.
Okay, Carla wanted more in there. Okay, so what's the preference?
Maybe twenty if we had more incidents this year.
Okay, well, twenty is two incidents. So Al, you wanna stick with ten, or you wanna go twenty?
I would go to ten, just.
I'm sorry, I would go to ten and rely on the reserve fund. I mean, these are all, by definition, unexpected.
Okay, I, I'd support that. Anybody else wanna do ten? We've got two tens, one twenty. You'll do ten?
We've already picked up.
Okay, right, $10,000. Okay, we're doing good here. All right, so, so we're gonna vote on it, but we're voting on $10,000.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so go ahead.
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article eighteen with the amount being $10,000.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The next one is an article. It's, it is an article, so it stays there, it doesn't close out, which we keep to fund retirements during the year when there's a payout for accrued sick, accrued vacation, whatever. We don't know who's gonna retire necessarily. For example, Pam's retiring this year, so my guess is, given how long she's been here, it's a pretty big number for her. I don't know, so I'm just guessing. So this is to shore up that fund, to make sure there's money there when people retire.
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article nineteen.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so now the next one, Mark, is one that has been proposed by, Paul Sabelli's got a couple here. This is his first one. So he wants to basically, this is his article, and he wants to fund it through use of his overlay reserve, so it's not coming out of the general fund, and I believe it's 5,000 bucks?
Uh, fourteen.
14,000, sorry. So he wants to take 14,000 out of his overlay account to fund this, to provide for the appraisal services he needs for cyclical inspections. Anybody have an issue? So this does not hit the tax levy, at least directly.
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article twenty.
Second.
All in favor? All right, the next one is the 100K for John Parent for the facilities maintenance fund. And the next one after that is the 25K for the recreation, recreation facility maintenance fund. Go ahead.
I move that the board support at-town meeting Articles twenty-one and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're not gonna do, let's see, revolving fund, okay, the next one's easy. So this is the article you need to basically allow money to come out of the various revolving funds we have, and I think we've got ten, with rec being by far the biggest one. So this allows a certain amount of money to come out to pay the bills that are supposed to be paid with the fees that are collected. So this is one you have to do.
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor? And we're gonna skip the next group. We're hoping that Ben Smith and maybe some other CPC members will be with us on the 11th to talk about their projects. Okay, which I believe are three, which is the railing, it's the fire truck, the antique fire truck. What's the third one?
Third one's transfer of.
Oh, transfer, yeah. How could I forget that one? Okay, so they, they, they've been invited to come, so we've waited to hear back from that. Okay, we're gonna skip twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. We're gonna hear from Mimi Latrell next Tuesday about the three of those. Those are the three planning boards sponsored.
About twenty-eight.
Uh, we're not doing that one because that's the, so we're removing that one. That's a cemetery commission that we're not doing for this.
Oh, we're not doing it?
Well, we never came to an agreement to do it.
To do what, to have one?
To amend the special act of 91 to add a cemetery commission.
Yeah. I think Bill still wants to do that. We, basically, we can do an ad hoc committee that has no real power, but if we wanna give them power, we gotta go this route to amend the special act.
Well, I thought we'd at least gotten to the point, we concluded we had to do the special act, but I thought we weren't ready that this would be something we'd do in the fall.
Oh, okay.
To really think about it and do it right.
Okay.
I think we should take it off.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else disagree taking it off for now? This is temporary, as far as annual.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good point, Sam. I'm sorry, I drawn a line there. I forgot why I drew the line through it. Okay, thirty-two is appropriation of cable funds for fiscal year 25 and 26. So this is the PEG money that we get from Verizon, Charter, and Comcast. It's now sitting in a holding account because it's got to be appropriated, which we never, which we didn't understand before. So it's still sitting there. We still don't have a contract with Southwood Access Media to go forward, so there's nothing to appropriate at this point. So this is something that probably will happen in the fall, too. I'm looking at Sam because.
So we can't actually.
We could appropriate, but what?
Move these into an account that we could spend, though, which we can't.
We would have to appropriate for a specific purpose, like what we're trying to do with the Zoom system in this room, whatever, but we don't have that number either.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I think this is fall.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
So that one's coming off. Okay. All right, the next one is our contract for valuation services in excess of three years. Again, this is Paul Sabelli. He wants to be able to do the same thing that we did in the first article, or our second one, that schools and town can do, to have a contract that's more than three years. He wants to do a five-year contract, I think, to do the personal property appraisals that he does. So he needs this because the one that we normally approve does not pick up the assessor's office.
So this is limited to five years?
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Um, okay. I move that the board support at-town meeting Article thirty-three.
Second.
All in favor? All right. So there's two stipends here that are being, that we're being asked to add. One is for the assessors. If certain steps are done, certain certifications are received. The other is for Brian's Department Treasurer, same thing, certain certifications are received. I don't know, how much were the stipends? A thousand?
Thousand dollars.
Okay, a thousand bucks. So we really didn't talk about this. It's a thousand bucks that if qualifications there would be added to their budget, so.
I, I support this.
I'm okay with this.
Something you do need to earn.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a silly question? Isn't this really part of the salary administration plan?
But because it's a, it looks like, for whatever reason, it's a, it's a statute that, uh, 'cause it has the words, "In any city or town which adopts the section comma", right? So there's a whole, we were just talking about this before the meeting. There's a whole bunch of these kinda opt-in statutes. But you're right, I guess, I guess the personnel board could also just do this through a local.
But these are contract positions.
Okay, okay, good point.
So.
Okay, all right.
So yes, for the assessor, and it's for the treasurer, so these are not SAP.
Yeah, yeah.
So now everybody understand why this will not be SAP?
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like there is support for this?
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article thirty-four.
Second.
All in favor? Then do thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven's the next one.
Okay, the next we're gonna, oh, 'cause it's related. I move that the board support at-town meeting Article thirty-seven.
Second.
All in favor? So everything's been five zeros so far tonight.
About thirty-five.
We're going back to that one. Okay.
Doesn't look like it's complete in the war.
That's right, it's not. So this one, we're not ready to vote on. I think we're gonna support it, but it's not ready. The language is not there.
So what, what does this mean, if someone could explain it to me?
Yeah, and I, I think Mr. Hamilton was working with council to have him prepare something on this.
I, I thought we were. So basically, today, it allows somebody to, to perform senior tax work-off services for another person. So if you have somebody who's incapacitated, you know, a volunteer could come and offer to work off there. So, you know, this is a great thing for, you know, volunteers, for, for, for young people, or, you know, cousin, brother, significant other, whatever. It's, it's a way of, it's a way of providing relief for seniors who may not be physically or otherwise capable of actually performing the tax work-off services.
Adds access to the relief, which is great.
Yeah.
Is it limited to just people who have, cannot perform the work?
I don't know that there is, I don't know that that's the case. In fact, I don't think it is the case. You know, somebody could do it on my behalf.
And for by a work-off, this is, you're actually behind on your taxes, or you.
No.
No, this, no, this is the, this, this tax work-off where you can get up to $2,000 of.
Up to two, okay, so there's a cap on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, so it sounds like a good idea.
Yes.
All right, so we'll vote on that when we get the language into the warrant. Okay, we've already done thirty-six, we did thirty-seven. So the next one is accepting master law for investment of trust funds, which allows more, more choices, but still good choices. It's, it's using what they call their prudent man investment, excuse me, prudent investment rule.
I think this is a good one, because we have traditionally had very low performance on our trust funds.
Yeah, because we couldn't do much.
State law restrictions.
It was very restrictive as far as what they could do. So this gives more choices, but still not adding a lot of risk is not the intent to the portfolio. But after the last couple days, I'm not sure. Okay, so I think it's a good idea. Al, any questions on this one?
No, you know, I, I don't think we'll be investing in beef steak mines.
In Bitcoin.
Bitcoin.
Stay away from crypto. Okay, Andrew?
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article thirty-eight.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, thirty-nine is Carl's resistance petition. Andrew?
Okay, I move that the board support at-town meeting Article thirty-nine.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so that's the one, that's zero five, opposed. Okay, so we've gotten to a ton of them, so.
I'm sorry, just to, just to close one issue up, and that Mr. Dennington brought up, we have Ms. McAuliffe with us also.
Thank you for looking into that, I appreciate it.
And she, well, no, she took it upon herself.
Okay.
The big invoice that we'd paid in this past year was the public safety staffing study.
Okay.
And then we had a couple of smaller bills, one was a par for the Atwood.
So what's the total?
So it was 27, 68, 750. Current balance in the article is 25, 539.
So we put it back up to thirty-five.
You went really fast.
Twenty-seven, six, eight, seven.
Okay, so we have spent almost $30,000.
Yeah, and, right, and so the current balance in the article is down to just over $25,000.
It builds up over a year?
Yeah, this is an article. It doesn't close out. So now we'd, we'd put it back up to thirty-five if we.
Recharging it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so you wanna do it?
Sure.
All right, so let's go back to that one.
Thank you, Carla.
Yeah, thank you, Carla. Okay, so that one is number, where is it? Where is it?
It is number seventeen.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so Andrew?
I move that the board support at-town meeting Article seventeen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so that's all we intend to do tonight. We're gonna meet.
I'll put the grid together.
Yep. And Bridget, I'm talking to you. You do not have to record each of those votes. We, all you have to say is, "See attached", and we'll give you a attachment to reflect the votes, to save you a little trouble on the minutes. Okay, so next Tuesday night, we're gonna start 6:30 with Mimi Latrell. She'll talk about the three planning board articles. We can vote on those. We hope Ben Smith's gonna come, talk about the CPC, at least the substantive articles. We can vote on those. Then at 7:45, we will join the advisory meeting. They're gonna start at 7:30 to do some administrative stuff. We'll join them, and then, for the first time, really, you know, talk about the budget since our February 8th summit, and see if we can't come to a meeting of the minds and vote on what needs to go in the warrant, so that Mark's got that to get ready for the following week when we sign it. Okay, everybody agree with the plan? Okay, so remember, it's all Zoom. So we'll go on at 6:30 with our Zoom, and then we'll have to log off and log on to the advisory Zoom. Okay, so we will not be here. All right, any more public comment, any other? Okay, all right, motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Not too bad.